Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. Welcome to everyone in the audience. It's always good to see some new faces in the council chambers, so welcome to everyone. I'll go ahead and ask the deputy clerk to call roll, please.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dormand.
Here.
Mayor DeBarr.
Here.
And if I could ask, we have a special guest with us in the audience, Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary, Dr. Vito Ambossiani. If you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor. Our next item is adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you could please do that on the vote cast. We'll give Julie some practice.
I may not be answering.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. We're just waiting for the screen to pop up here. Okay.
That.
But that was for roll call. Okay. The agenda is passed unanimously. Thank you. Next up is proclamations and recognitions. We have two tonight. First, I'm going to invite Diane Page to come join me up at the podium, so we can recognize Diane's service on our Parks and Recreation Commission.
Chair.
Yeah, there's her.
Please come join me over here at the podium.
I'll go ahead and give you the wine now, but I'll read you the proclamation. So why don't you come on over here and face this way, so the camera can get both of us. This is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of Diane Page, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. The town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, serving between February 2014 and January 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to share any thoughts, or are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
That's a good thought.
Next up, I would like to invite Liz Howard to come join me up at the podium, so we can recognize Liz's service on the Yountville Arts Commission and the Invision Yountville Town Advisory Group.
Do you want you all to get?
Why?
Thank you, John. That's beautiful.
Yes. This also is a certificate of appreciation and recognition of your service on the Yountville Arts Commission and Invision Yountville Town Advisory Group. The town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and your service to the town of Yountville as a member of the Yountville Arts Commission from February 2017 to February 2018, and the Invision Yountville Town Advisory Group from June 2017 until February 2018.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. That's a good accessory you have, John. Yes. We're going to move ahead to our public comment portion of the agenda. This is not when we have public comment for items on the agenda, for those of you that are new to the council meetings, but this is when anyone that wants to address the council on an item not on today's agenda, we welcome that. And I would like to invite Secretary Ambossiani first to come up and speak to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Dr. Vito Ambossiani, the Secretary of the California Department of Veterans Affairs to the council members, members of the village. I have a handout that I think would inform, I'm only going to speak for about three minutes, but would inform some of my remarks. I brought enough copies for everyone in the room. Have they been distributed?
We haven't, yes.
Oh, great. Okay, great. So I'm going to talk to you about water in Rector Reservoir. Rector Reservoir was created in 1945, when a dam was constructed on Rector Creek, about five miles northeast of here. For more than 70 years, this reservoir has met the water needs of the veterans' home and has, at different times, served the community of Yountville and other customers as well. The reservoir can hold 4,500 acre-feet of water, but that amount is reduced by factors such as the buildup of sediment. Rector Reservoir today has about 3,100 acre-feet of water. Two weeks ago, on February 7th, as part of Cal-Vet's effort to install about $100,000 worth of new monitoring equipment for the reservoir, and in light of the northern part of the state's reduced rainfall this winter, we requested the Division of Drinking Water to assist us in assessing the water supply at Rector Reservoir. Now, this is where you need to know the organizational chart of the state a little bit. The Division of Drinking Water is not part of the Division of Natural Resources. That's where dam safety and fish and wildlife belong, but rather, the Division of Drinking Water falls under the State Water Resources Control Board, which actually falls under Cal EPA. In response to our request, the State Water Board began gathering information on the veterans' homes' water commitments to help determine whether our existing supply is adequate to meet the need. This information gathering, I have to stress, is in its earliest stage and will definitely take several more weeks to finalize. As of today, we have about 2 cubic feet of water flowing into Rector Reservoir every second. Now, think about that number. That's 1,000 gallons. That's like my household with four teenage boys in high school getting ready for school in the morning. That's 1,000 gallons flowing into Rector Reservoir, about, and about 1,000 gallons flowing out down the hill to support the wildlife habitat, especially the fish. We would be in a state of equilibrium with 1,000 cubic feet flowing in per minute and 1,000 feet flowing out, and the reservoir would maintain its level if no one were using the water except the downstream fish. But that is not the case, and that's where I would refer you to the distribution diagram that I brought. You'll see that Rector Reservoir, after giving a sample of water to fire training and water sampling, is diverted to the Department of Fish and Games Fish Hatchery, which is downstream, and then by pipes to the water treatment plant, which then is distributed to four or five wineries off the Silverado Trail, the town of Yountville, the Napa County Museum, the golf course, and any of a slew of other little independent users. And finally, to the veterans' home. You'll notice that there is an intertie with the pipeline that supplies Napa City with Lake Hennessy. So keep that in mind. The State Water Board suggested that since we are today at 352 feet, that we all begin a process for a possible shortage, not out of any surety that there's going to be trouble, but out of due diligence, think the Boy Scouts and their pledge to always be prepared. The veterans' home and the town have several options, including importing water from another supplier. There is such an agreement, at least with Cal-Vet and the city of Napa, for water in emergency situations such as drought. The State Water Board's recommendation to identify alternate supplies is nothing more than standard protocol for water systems that face potential supply issues, and their recommendations is not unique. I don't know if those of you have access to this second handout.
Yes.
But this is the first I've seen. This is a result of that fancy equipment we've just installed up there. You'll notice it only takes a minute of scrutiny to understand how this chart works. This is for the month of February. Each line going across is one day in the month, and what you'll see is an initial of the person who documented what time of the day, how much the incremental meter is reading of water flowing in, how much water is flowing out. The most interesting columns are, of course, the penultimate and the anti-penultimate. I took high school English. Notice that there's no rainfall. Every column is a zero. And if you'll notice, the dam level started on February 1st at 352.9 feet, and it has dropped inexorably, .8, .7, .6, .5, .3, .2, .1. That's where we get the ballpark, and that's where the gentleman from the State Water Control Board got his estimate, that if we are at 352 and the carryover level, the level below which Rector Reservoir should not go, is 346, there's a six-foot, there's six feet of water in there beyond which we can't get, we can't go below. Well, if we're going down at the rate of one foot of reservoir water per month, it only takes six months to reach that level, and that puts us in August. Reservoirs are often required to maintain a certain level of water in the reservoir for future use. This is called carryover storage. That word, think of it as, how much water do you need to carry over from this year of, say, drought to the next year? Based on current assumptions, carryover storage may limit the amount of water withdrawn from the reservoir. This may present a problem in late summer 2018. One of the issues that the State Water Board is looking at is how much carryover storage we actually need. The Division of Drinking Water will work with us at Cal-Vet to provide technical assistance as we develop plans to provide adequate water. Under current assumptions, Rector Reservoir should continue to serve the local community until mid-August 2018. This provides us, I hope, with ample time to develop and implement a mitigation plan. Let me just back up one second. I've given a lot of numbers based on these machines. These machines are new. They've just been installed. We have not hired yet. I've just been given authority to hire five full-time people to monitor these. They haven't been hired yet. So we're using other assets to monitor this equipment. I'm not even sure the machines have been calibrated completely correctly yet. So there are three questions lest everyone, anyone panic. Number one, the amount of water, 1,000 cubic feet per minute, that is feeding the fish. Is that enough? Is that too much? We need to work with our fish and wildlife people to know, how little amount, how little a volume can we give you and keep those fish alive? Now, we are also, like your sister communities to the north, under the, we're fighting the same water audit lawsuits, and you know what St. Helena Justice, they're doing the same, they're in the same predicament of having to feed the downstream fish and watching their own reservoir levels go down. We need to know, this carryover level of 346 feet, how accurate is that? I do know that if the reservoir dips to 309 feet, all water supply to everyone will be cut off because the pipes do, the water will fall below the level of the pipes. So the only thing, we can work on all of these numbers. The only thing we can't work on is Mother Nature and how much rainfall will fall between now and then. So that's all I know now, and I pledge that we will continue to monitor the equipment, monitor the situation, and we're just in the beginning process of putting together a better group to communicate, not only with the town, but with ourselves. Remember, Mr. Mayor, Cal-Vet has done nothing to that reservoir in 70 years. Nothing. Every once in a while, we set an old veteran up there with a measuring stick and a binoculars and asked to report, "How's it look?" But now, thanks to the lawsuit, we're being asked to monitor this, the acidity, the fluidity, the turbidity, and every other iddity related to the flow of water, to keep the fish alive. So we're trying to comply with the law and to be a good neighbor to all of, to everyone in the valley. That's as much as I know tonight.
Well, Mr. Secretary, thank you very much for coming and helping clarify the situation. Very much appreciated. Thank you. I do also just want to recognize that we have Tracy Creppen from Assembly Member Agri Arcuri's office, and Alex Pater from Senator Bill Dodd's office here. They're all paying attention to the situation with our reservoir. Anyone else like to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no others, moving forward, we're going to move ahead to Item 7A, which is our one consent calendar item. Is there any discussion or action on this consent calendar item? Anyone make an emotion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Just waiting on technology, and it did its own thing. So it knew us better than it, we knew ourselves. That one consent calendar item passes unanimously. Is that as we all were voting?
I never voted.
I know. We all agree that a 5-0 vote is correct.
Yes.
Okay, we have no presentations, so we're going to get to what I think you're all here for, which is our public hearing, the Proposition 218, Proposed Water and Wastewater Rate Adjustments Hearing. And before we get into the staff report, I'll just remind folks, for those of you that are not familiar with our process, you will be given up to five minutes each speaker. You'll have one time to speak, so be sure to get all of your either questions and/or comments in during that five-minute period. Don't feel the need to use all five minutes if you have already heard your question or your statement, but feel free to take up to five minutes each. So what will happen is, you'll hear a staff report. We'll have the public hearing. We will close the public hearing after all of you that want to speak have a chance to speak, and then we'll be deliberating with the council for a potential decision. So with that, I'll invite staff to start with a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I need to share with everybody that this process has been going on for some time, and some of that may be more apparent to some of you than others, and some processes. On December 5th, the town council received and await a water and wastewater rate study completed by Bartle Wells and Associates. The work had been done prior by the town council ad hoc committee, looking at different approaches and methodologies. And I will share a little bit, I don't think there's anybody in the room here that likes rate increases, including the staff that is sitting up here. But I think we need to realize that, in this case, I have a fiduciary responsibility to present the information on the operating structure and what is necessary to run our utility enterprise funds. And I do want to stress that we operate what are known as utility enterprise funds. They are distinct and separate from the town's general fund. They are set up to operate on the premise like a business enterprise, and I know we've got some folks also that have been involved in homeowners associations, so it's not unlike necessary some of those structures, where the revenue from the ratepayers is supposed to pay the necessary operating cost. I'm going to go into a little more detail on how challenging the rate structure process in California can be, but I do want to talk a little bit about the process that got us here. Under California law, the town is required to do a five-year rate study. So when we want to raise rates, we're not looking at it in simply a one-year increment. We're looking at what does it take for an extended time period. We're also required to have an independent engineer's report or an estimate on what it takes. And the evaluation includes looking at, what are our operating costs, personnel costs, supplies, materials? What are the capital infrastructure costs? In other words, what does it take to maintain the pipelines? A lot of you are familiar with turning the spigot on, flushing the toilet, and I'm going to surmise not so much what happens around that, and nor should you be. That's our responsibility to provide a safe water drinking system and to remove the waste. So with that, the ad hoc committee met with Bartle Wells, our council policies, and over several periods, they looked at what were the costs. The town uses a rolling five-year capital improvement plan, so we're always looking in terms of where is the system at in its maintenance, what does it need, and taking inventory. We're also tracking what are operating costs and projecting. And for most of you, I'm sure many of you probably all have your five-year cost estimate for your home expenditures. We need to do that. That's what we're expected to do in this process. So one of the things that we put together was that analysis of what would it take with a level of rate to be able to do the proposed capital expenditure, approximately $5 million. We'll go into that a little bit later, and meet our operating costs. So the ad hoc committee met with staff from Bartle Wells on several occasions to look at, what would it look like? What would it take? Unfortunately, and it benefited the ratepayers, the town hasn't had a rate increase since 2015. So we've gone three years without a rate adjustment. So with that, the ad hoc committee had some rather robust discussions on, should we look at use of the drought reserve fund? How much? And ultimately, they came to a recommendation of $200,000. I shared this with everybody, because they looked at more, they looked at less, and they came up with a range that they felt comfortable. We also looked, in some cases, at debt financing. Debt financing is not uncommon in a utility enterprise, where it allows for the extension of capital costs to be paid over a longer term. Now, most of you know, that also means you're ending up having a fixed cost that has to be paid back over that same longer term. In this particular case, the $5 million is on the very borderline of, did it make economic sense with the cost of issuance and the timelines that would be necessary for us to finish the projects and our capacity to do so in a five-year? It's still something that could be looked at. I share this only because this is what the ad hoc council committee worked with within that structure, in terms of looking at what could be done to manage and what was the rate structure that's appropriate. So where are we at today? On December 5th, the town council established a rate maximum. And I do want to stress, the Proposition 218, which was a voter-enacted California initiative, requires and outlines a mechanism by which the town has to communicate and establish proposed rate structures, and a noticing requirement. We have to set a maximum amount. So it could ultimately be less, but it can't be any higher than the maximum that's established by the council action. So on December 5th, at a council meeting, they received the report, accepted that, and provided direction for the town staff to send out the Prop 218 notices, which are required by California law to go to property owners. The town also took the additional of providing a ballot opportunity, or I should say, a protest form, so that people have the ability. In California's case here, Prop 218, if you have 50-plus 1% of the parcels, because it's a property-owner-based process, then the rate increase could be halted. Council also took and made sure that we had a provision that tenants who directly pay their utility bill would have an ability to protest and have that be counted. So the council took that action on December 5th, and late that month, the town sent out the Prop 218 notice, as well as the protest forms. On February 6th, there was an informational workshop, and we've also had a fair amount of dialogue and interaction in the Yountville Sun coverage and by local concerned citizens. And here we are today. We will go through a quick summary of the process, why we're here, and then the public hearing, and then we'll determine whether our next steps are based on whether the protest forms are sufficient to stop the process or allow for the council to go forward. And during that part of the process, there'll be an ample opportunity for community members to share their thoughts on the process. If I could, we'll follow with the brief PowerPoint. I will also point out for technical, Doug Dove with Bartle Wells is here, and in terms of that. But we're going to go through briefly, go back, I'm sorry. Just a quick summary of California laws that affect the public sector rate setting. Under Prop 218, water and wastewater rates must be based on the cost of service. The town is not allowed to make a profit. They must be proportional to all customer bases. One class of customer cannot subsidize another class of customer. This year, as are many agencies, we also, sort of a double whammy in the sense that a Supreme Court case known as the San Juan Capistrano decision eliminated the ability of the town to have tiered conservation-based rates. That's not a decision that the town council went in with. That is the Supreme Court, and it ruled that you cannot have tiers that cost more than the direct cost unless you can justify the cost. Government Code 6600 also says that wastewater and water fees must be based on reasonable nexus between the amount of the fee and the benefit received by the new connections. So I just share with you that we operate in a very unique environment in terms of what we can do. Now, most of you are here because you prefer not to pay the rate increases. Next, so this slide shows the annual rate increase over five years. And it starts with a small increase, on average, about $12.63 over five years, and will raise a current customer, a single-family residential customer is paying about $1,600. The monthly increase on water this year will go up approximately 2%, $1.97. Wastewater, 12%. And then on the water, approximately 7% on all the factors for the next future years, ultimately reaching $113 in the year 2022. Wastewater is at $44.82, and will ultimately, after five years of an increase in the amount of $5.38, $6.02, $6.75, $7.56, and $8.46, reach a total of $78.91. I share that because that's what everybody here, they want to know, what's it going to cost you? We've provided that information. And for those of you that have been following coverage, you also know that the city of Napa recently just concluded a similar process. Their consumption charge is significantly higher than our consumption charge. City of Calistoga just adopted last, two weeks ago, a new rate increase with rate increases considerably higher on a basis than ours. And St. Helena, for those of you that are following, the St. Helena monthly water bill is actually higher, just the water bill, than our combined water and sewer will be in 2022. I share that because it's also important to note that those agencies need to have rates that are sufficient to recover their operating costs in the way that they're doing. Ours are done in a way that recover our costs. But I do share that only because it shows that our systems operated in a reasonable manner. But again, when you're looking at what something's going to cost compared to today, 2017, five years later, it is going up. Quick overview of the water system. Self-supporting enterprise. Revenues must be sufficient to cover operating expense. Here's something that's also unique. The town purchases all of our water from the veterans' home. You all get a bill. The town gets a bill. The town gets a bill from the veterans' home, and we're expected to pay our share of the cost. Currently, the water enterprise holds no debt. Our capital improvement plan for the next five years is approximately 2.1. We have a restricted drought water reserve bank of just over 2 million, unrestricted fund balance of 1.4. And again, rates have not been increased since 2015. And again, rates have not been increased since 2015. Yountville is very unique in that we are a small system, which means there's also a small number of accounts to distribute the overhead operating cost. We are also a principally residential system. I'll show a slide later, but approximately 85% of our accounts are residential. Only 10% of our accounts are business commercial. The chart here illustrates the extreme difference that the business community pays. If you look, the single-family residential meter is a 3/4 meter. Most of our larger commercial businesses are 4 and 6. Some of the smaller restaurants that are a 2-inch meter. But you can see the significant difference. A 4-inch meter is $702 just to have the service as opposed to the $42.07 single-family residential. We also have an out-of-town surcharge of 70% because it costs us additionally to maintain the system and the lines that are outside of town. Also, fewer people over that same distance, so that's a higher cost. All right. We mentioned briefly, these are the new tiers for a billing unit. And I will point out, a billing unit is 1,000 gallons of water. 1,000 gallons of water. So your first 1,000 gallons of water cost $3.17. Units beyond four will be $3.63. Multifamily will be $3.52, and non-residential, $3.52. And again, in comparison, this is, these are lower rates than what the city of Napa has for their actual consumption charges. And this is a result of the San Juan Capistrano case where we had to limit the number of tiers. Here's the current survey position. And Yountville is pretty much near the slightly below average on the rates. All right. Wastewater. Again, a self-supporting enterprise fund, revenue should be sufficient to cover operating expenses. Here we have a different and unique relationship with the Veterans Home. The Veterans Home, under an agreement going back to the '70s, contributes directly to the percentage cost of the joint treatment plant. So there's a formula. They pay their share of capital, their share of personnel expenses, but it's only for the treatment plant. The Veterans Home has no responsibility for paying for any of the collection system located in the town, nor for the pumping station that we have out on, just past the Mobile Home Parks that's necessary to move it forward, nor do they have any responsibility to contribute towards the water system lines in the town limits. Conversely, the town has no responsibility for any of the lines on the Veterans Home similarly. Those are all the Veterans Home's responsibility. But I know some people have raised the question of why doesn't the Veterans Home look like it's paying more? And it's because the costs aren't going up in those areas that are the Veterans Home The town has aging infrastructure. This town was incorporated in 1965, and the water system and sewer system predate incorporation. And we continue to need to put money in a proactive way to maintain the system. So in this particular case, the five-year capital improvement plan for the wastewater is 3.36 million. And again, rates have not been increased since 2015. Rate structure here is much simpler. It simply is the fixed fee cost, and you can see that it's going up $5.38 a month in the first of the year. Wastewater has debt. We currently have approximately $205,000 worth of debt that we have to pay, so we're paying for that. And that was designed, one was our state revolving fund loan, which was required by the state regulatory agency to expand our recycled water to avoid putting treated effluent into the Napa River. That was not an inexpensive proposition. That was a $3.4 million project on its own, which I will also point out that the Veterans Home had to contribute their share, and they paid in full their share. We also, earlier in 2013, replaced a considerable sewer line under Madison. If you may recall, we repaved Madison. And it's proactive and good sense to make sure that the water and sewer lines underneath the road, when you make a reconstruction, are taken care of. So those were done. The good news is the energy efficient grant will be paid off in 2023, 24, excuse me. Also, it's not showing there, but one of the things that the town has done to be proactive is we've installed solar panels, both at the pump plant and at the corporation yard, so that we can reduce our ongoing electrical costs because the single-largest electrical consumer in the town of Yountville is your wastewater treatment plant. Again, here, a very unique situation. Yountville is the absolute lowest in the area, and even with the increase, will continue to be. The net effect, when you put your combined water and sewer bill, is that we have one of the lowest combined rates in the area. Again, just to share what's driving, this is the cost to purchase water from the Veterans Home. In the year 2010, 2011, it was $662, and it just cost us $1,336. And I'll have to figure out with the news today where we might be going in terms of cost for this year and next year. But as you can see, that is, you know, that's just a direct cost. We have to pay that bill. And next is our capital projects, and I'll ask the Public Works Director to explain a few of the key projects. And I'll point out, we do have the ability to not fund these projects. I don't recommend that, but the reality is, we could do less capital project funding. We may see deferred maintenance, and it may cause issues over time, but that is certainly an option in reducing some of the capital projects. So Joe?
Thank you very much. As the town manager duly noted, these numbers are based on final utility rates and what the council approves. This is also driven, in a large part, by council policy and past practice, which is to try and get the infrastructure in good shape before we put a 25-year road, which is typically what we try to place on top of our utilities. So for the next, and this is a five-year total, so one, a little over $1.9 million for water capital. Wastewater treatment, which is up at the treatment plant, a little over $1 million, $1,100. Wastewater collection, $1,800. And I will say that in the collection, wastewater collection case, a large part of this is driven by our permit with the state, and they dictate some of what we need to do in terms of keeping our system in good shape. We do that as a normal part of our doing business, but they expect that, and it's locked in as a part of our annual CIP. Water distribution. So a couple of the projects that are driving this number, a typical one is a main and lateral repair. So we're going to propose to reconstruct Yount Street. That's going to be using Measure T funds, so that's 100% non-general fund money. We'll also use some other gas tax funds to reconstruct that road. So the anticipation is that that portion, at least, will not come out of the general fund. However, the water distribution system will need to be repaired. The enterprise fund will pay for that. Main and lateral repair on Yount, that's about 900 feet of main and about 10 laterals. This is pretty close to the same length as, a little bit shorter than Yountville Crossroad. That cost us about $440,000 to repair. So we're thinking that that cost is going to be somewhere in the $430,000 range. That's what the estimate is. Washington Park main and lateral assessment. That picture on the far right-hand side is in front of someone's house who woke up in the middle of the night with a main break. Typically, our mains are designed to last 50 years. That neighborhood is nowhere near 50 years old, so it's relatively shocking to have those kinds of main breaks and ruptures in a system that's relatively young. So we're going to propose to do a little bit of study, and then based on that study, we'll come back with some proposals to repair the system as needed. Wastewater collections. So that's here in town, the collection system. Infiltration and inflow reduction. So this is driven by our own programs to reduce inflow and infiltration. Inflow and infiltration is essentially clean water. So to the extent that we can stop relatively clean water from coming into the sewer system, it helps keep the rates lower. That's especially true during storm periods when we see the inflow and infiltration accumulate to about 2/3 or more that it is on a dry day. That's $413,000 over the five-year period. Our sewer main replacement program, that is also one of those programs that not only helps reduce inflow and infiltration, but it also helps keep the sewage in the ground where we all expect it to be. Roots, older systems that have some irregularities all contribute to needing this replacement, and it's a normal annual part of our CIP project list. Pipe burst, the town force main. So the force main that runs from the town pump station just south of the Mobile Home Park and runs underneath the highway and up to the joint treatment plant, it's about a half a mile long. That picture that you see in the lower right-hand corner is a truck that we park on top of the manhole that runs down Land Lane. When it rains, the system gets surcharged, and it has a habit of blowing that manhole lid off. That is a violation of our permit. If that sewage runs down and gets into a creek, it presents a real challenge for us in reporting and possible fines to the state. So we're proposing to do that in place. Pipe burst it. It's a relatively affordable and efficient way to do a program. We're hoping to do that in the outer years of the five-year collection. CIP. Water reclamation facility, the joint treatment plant. $1.8 million. So a few of the projects. We have a long outfall line, better than a half-mile, that runs from the joint treatment plant out to the Napa River. We need to video that, see where we need to do repairs, and then go out into the vineyards and dig up those areas and repair that line so that we can have, meet the terms of our permit that has us having our effluent go into the river as planned and not out into the vineyards or into the soil. Trickleling filter media, that replace relatively, a good plan is once every 15 to 20 years. We're well past that. So what we plan to do is replace the trickleling filter media in the primary filter and then use the old filter media that could still be usable in the secondary filter. So that's not totally unusable filter media. We hope to reclaim some of that and use it to help us offset some of the costs. Clean and inspect the primary and secondary digester. That, again, is a normal, ordinary part of maintenance, and it's on a regular 10- or 15-year schedule. Again, we're a bit past that, and we need to do that. And then wastewater office lab modernization. We have some requirements for helping us keep up to the terms of our permit, and we need to expand our office space a little bit. That's been relatively the same office space since it was created in 1977, and it's getting a little bit tight, especially given the fact that we have additional equipment that we need to place in there, which displaces some of the staff. And with that, I'll turn it back to the town manager.
Thank you, Joe. I mentioned earlier that we are a small system. We have 814 accounts. We are 87% residential. 714 of the accounts are residential. They generate 65% of the revenue. We have 70, which is 10% of our accounts that are commercial. I'll also clarify that many of the commercial have multiple accounts because they have multiple meters. They don't necessarily just have one meter going on to the property. So if you look at the V Marketplace, for example, they don't simply have one meter, they have multiple. And then we have 4% of the accounts, which is the churches, school, and the town. I will also share with you, the town does not provide itself with free water. We charge ourselves the same. We charge ourselves for the water. So what you can see there is that the system generates $1,212,000 in revenue. And $345,000 of that's generated by the commercial accounts, so they represent just under 30% of the total revenue. They do use a bit more on the per capita side. But again, when we talk about what is our community, we're a residential community primarily. Next. Wastewater, very similar, only here you have the component introducing the Veterans Home. So, and again, the Veterans Home share only is as it relates to the joint treatment plant. So that factor is smaller when you look at everything, but we have slightly fewer sewer accounts. And then factor there, so again, a $1.5 million operation. And the town's total budget, when you combine all of the general fund and our two enterprise funds, is generally around $10 million. So with that, Mayor, Council, if there's any questions, I know a lot of you have seen this before, and you may have questions. If not, we certainly have more technical information, happy to answer any of those. But it may be appropriate to open the public hearing and hear from the public.
Before we do that, I wanted to ask you a question. If you can touch on the information that we received from the city of Calistoga, and in particular, this will be an item that I think some of you folks may, it's been brought up already. The council and staff have been researching it for a number of weeks.
Yep.
And there's an opportunity for consideration on using a model that the city of Calistoga, actually tonight, I believe, is actually adopting their plans. But they have a low-income assistance program that might be of interest to us.
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct. We've done some research. It's not unique to Calistoga. It just happens to be that it had been in the press, and some residents had shared that. The low-income rate adjustment program that Calistoga offers is tied to the PG&E care program. So low and low-income residents that have been certified as meeting the eligibility criteria through PG&E bring their bill in to show, because it's marked, and then they would be entered. In the case of Calistoga, Calistoga offers a 20% reduction on the water consumption and water fixed fees. So if the council was interested in setting up a certain program, we certainly can, with one caveat. And that caveat is that it cannot be from ratepayer-paid revenues because that would be in violation of the one class of customer cannot pay more to subsidize another. But if the council was to provide, say, $15,000 to 20,000 to establish funding from the general fund, we could put in what is known as a low-income rate adjustment program.
And we don't know yet how many residents might qualify for that. It would be something we'd have to learn going forward if that's an element that we want to consider.
Correct. And I mean, it would be a question of how many of those folks came forward and registered for the program. We could certainly put a marketing program together.
Okay. Thank you. Any specific questions of the staff report? Councilor Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentations. One question I have had from some residents is talking about water usage. And I just, the figures I have is that our single-family and multifamily residential account for about 69% of our usage and about 65% of our revenue. Our non-residential accounts for about 31% of our usage and about 29% of our revenue. And then the other 7% comes from church, school, town. And I just want to make sure I'm pretty much in the ballpark of that.
I think if you go back, that, I I think if you go back, I would say that's pretty close to the slide that I was just showing there.
Right. And I just wanted to, but not the number of accounts, but the actual usage of our water, but pretty much dovetails with what people are paying.
Usage actually does, and that's why when you look at it, in some cases, and I will point out again, our businesses, you know, even though they may seem big to some of you in comparison, but we have four small B&amp;B hotel properties that are really, in some cases, they don't use that much more water than some of our largest single-family home. So, yes, I would say you're spot on.
Thank you. And then my other questions go to the use of the $200,000 from the drought contingency fund. Am I correct that the currently proposed maximums of 7% for water, 12% for sewer, include that infusion of $200,000 from the drought contingency fund?
That's correct. I'll bring you back.
So, if we were to, if somehow that were to go away, the rate increases would be higher.
Well, what I will, I think the better premise, and this was the council discussion back on December 5th, was if you didn't include the $200,000 from the drought reserve fund for the water, the water rate increase would have needed to be 8.5%. So, on a split vote, the council was not unanimous in the use of the drought reserve fund, but the vote, the majority vote did end up being to approve use of $200,000 from the drought reserve fund for capital and a rate increase, a maximum rate increase of 7%.
So, before we go on, because I saw Gary sit up in his chair, the rate would not go back up to 8.5% because we have set the maximum at 7. We would be creating a lower amount of revenue over the five-year period without the $200,000. Gary, is that going to make you sit back in your chair or not?
Yes.
There you go. Okay.
Sorry. That was inartful in my question. We would have had to do that before, but currently, our current maximums include already a $200,000 infusion from drought contingency fund. So, then my next question is, to do the 7% and 12%, the maximum for this first period from March 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018, are we transferring money in from the drought contingency fund during that nine-month period to keep those maximum increases?
I mean, that's a timing, and I need to go back in, not necessarily, because it's going into capital. But again, when we look at it, we do have capital expenditures in the first year of the water. But again, what I want to also point out, one of the other things that the ad hoc committee looked at was blended rates rather than rates that went up 9% one year, 6% one year, 12% based on the actual amount of our capital expenditure, because if you recall, the Public Works Director showed that we spend one amount one year significantly higher one year and then lower. So, rather than have a spike up and down, the ad hoc committee felt that it was better to have them spread more consistently over the five years than go up and down.
And I'll add some, and then if Councilor Mueller wants to add, since she and I were the two council members on the ad hoc committee, it was all about finding a way to bring down the, noticeably bring down the percent for the water from 8.5% to 7%. If we were to not do that, or that number was different, it would affect the fund balances at the end of the five years. So, it's not about affecting the rates, it's about affecting the fund balance at the end of the five years. We would potentially have to eliminate or postpone capital projects if that $200,000 wasn't added in to help keep the balance up. If we eliminate projects, then that $200,000 goes straight into the reserve fund, and it's a healthier fund at the end of five years. Councilor Mueller, is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, I'd just like to briefly say, we might not all, put it all in all at once either. It might be, and these are the classic budget transfers in and transfers out that we see during budget time. Some might go in at a different time. So, that's, I think the main point is that it will go in.
On sort of an ad-needed basis. Okay. And then, so, if, so 7 and 12 are our maximums. If we were to determine tonight that we wanted to shave some off those for this first nine-month period, not saying we will or won't, but if we wanted to, are our only choices to add some additional dollars from the general fund or to accelerate some of the already-planned infusion from the drought contingency fund, to move it from a later year to this nine-month period?
I don't know that I would agree with that. I think the other consequence is that if you do something less, you also accelerate drawing down your fund balance, which is a net consequence. You know, one thing that's important to recognize is that because of us using the average rate, they build on each other, and not fully funding a rate in year one has consequences potentially in year three or four.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of the staff report? Vice Mayor?
I'd like you to explain why it is that we have to have, why can we not examine this each year during the budget process, which we're going into now, and all of the capital improvements are in that budget process, but why could we not also look at the rates depending on, because things are changing and shifting around?
I'll answer the question as best I can. One, California state law, Proposition 218, requires the five-year. I want to remind you all that as a normal course of your budget, you provide direction with regard, you're approving a maximum amount. The council does have the ability on any individual year to lower that amount. So, I'm not quite sure I understand where the council, you know, that's one of the standard options that when we established the budget parameters, the last couple of years, we haven't because there's been no rate increase. But on an annual basis, you would have the ability to say, if factors had changed, we could adopt a lesser rate. So, I want to make sure that that is your prerogative currently within the.
But it is required by Proposition 218 that it be a five-year.
Correct.
Plan. Thank you.
But just to be clear, each year, we as a council will still be evaluating those projects. If, for example, there's a higher rainfall in a particular year, and we don't have the risk of needing to buy on the spot market from the city of Napa or elsewhere, we may feel more comfortable that that drought reserve fund isn't a critical insurance policy for us. But we can't know that until we get to those future years.
You're using a lot of averaging because, for example, we have projected 7.5% rate increases from the veterans' home. That's just based on an extrapolation of the past and some of the communications. There may be a year where that comes in right on. There may be a year when it's 12%, and then there may be a year when it's 6%. So, that's why I'm saying, we use a blended to try to have that, although when the secretary mentioned five additional staff, I'm assuming at some point we're going to get a bill for our fair share of those.
And then, as far as I understand, we don't know, the bill comes in arrears of the amount of water.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the staff report? Seeing that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and now it's your time to ask questions or share your comments with the council. If you would like to come up and in an orderly fashion, please identify yourself for the record, and you'll have, as I said, up to five minutes. We'll have a timer if we need it, but I'm sure you're all going to be very polite about the time of your comments, so welcome.
My name's Mary Camerota. I live at 26 Landy Way in Yountville. My house was the one that was pictured, and I just want to say that when the water main broke, I got no money from the town or assistance from them in any of the repairs to my home. If it wasn't for my homeowner's insurance, I don't know what I would have done. So, for you guys to say like, oh, you're going to fix stuff, that certainly wasn't the case for me. First of all, I just want to say that, you know, you can sit up here and candy coat this however you want, but the truth and the bottom line is the cost increase in 2015 went from $100 every other month for me to $100 a month. So, that's more than a 12% increase. And now you're proposing that you're going to increase my rates again, and my monthly bill is going to shoot up to 200 a month. So, my $100 a month bill is now going to be $200 a month. So, my expenses from previous to 2015 till now is going to quadruple. That's a 400% increase. So, you know, you guys can say, oh, it's only 12%, but if you actually did the math, you realize that the actual cost increase is a lot more than, you know, whatever it is you're putting on a graph. It's just an out-and-out fib that you guys are telling everybody, and the cost increase is a lot more to those of us who live here and have lived here for a lot longer than probably most of you. The $250,000 or quarter million dollars that you plan on using to replace the meters, I think is a frivolous expense. I don't think there's any reason to replace the meters. There's not that many people that live here. I can't imagine why we would need that, just so we can check our water usage? I mean, give me a break. As it is, I'm, a lot of my other neighbors are low-end users, so why would we care how little water that we're actually using? It's just ridiculous that you guys think, you know, if you want to do this, why don't you offer it to people who actually want it? And if they want it, they can buy it out instead of forcing all of us to have to use this. I just really think that the funds for all of the upgrades that you guys want to do could come from someplace else other than from us. I don't know where you're going to find the money, but I really just think it's very unfair that you're forcing this on us. So, that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll stop right now. Excuse me. If you're going to disturb the meeting, you'll be asked to leave. So, we're not here to applaud, to boo, to react in any way. We're going to respect everyone's opinion, and so I appreciate you respecting the protocol of our meeting. Thank you. Who's next to speak?
I want to start out just by saying that I'm not here to complain about a bill increase. I understand that costs for service rise every year, and that costs for the actual product, meaning water, will probably go up a lot in the next years. I get that. What I am here to do is to protest the categorization of the infrastructure improvements as a rate payer's problem. I feel that there is room to look at this rate increase by looking at a hybrid model where the costs of the water and the treatment are borne by the users, and the cost of the infrastructure is part of the general fund capital improvement projects. We all expect that the town budgets for infrastructure, we expect our roads to get paved and our street lights to be fixed and all of those things, and in that expectation is the delivery of water and wastewater removal. And I feel that we are being done a disservice by the separation of capital improvements as a different title, as an enterprise fund. Fine, it can break even as a service, but the infrastructure belongs to the whole town. And I feel like we would like that to be borne by the whole town in the general fund. There's lots of discretionary spending going on in the town, and we have long enjoyed a budget that other towns would envy. But if it's at the expense of people being able to live here, then that's an untrue statement. We, as a community, want to provide services that allow people to live here on a full-time basis. We expect that, and we also don't expect to be treated as adversaries in this process. I feel like it's been set up that this ad hoc committee has made some recommendations. We get these outside consultants. We spend a lot of money on that, but we don't spend much time on resident input. And I feel like in this ad hoc committee, there should have been rate payers in there because at this point, it feels like a done deal. And at this point, we get to complain, and you say, well, we've already done all the work. So, it feels like you've set up another adversarial position for us to be at a disadvantage for our five minutes, and your long study has not got us anywhere that everybody can support.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, Rick Tucker. I'm a Washington Park resident. It's odd being on this side of the podium. As you know, I'm often here trying to sell to the public certain things, in the place I work of which I'm not speaking any, in any way as a representative of that community. I live here, and I'm here for those purposes. Like Pam just said, I'm not here to say that I don't prefer to pay. I understand that as a resident, I have to pay for water and sewer. I just know you can bring those costs down. And I'm also here to say, as Pam did, everybody understands the responsibilities and the needs to provide water, whether it's purchasing it, keeping it clean, getting it to the user or on the opposite end, on the sewer treatment side. What I think you ought to do is you ought to look more closely at your own work, though. Two exhibits in particular that intrigued me were the exhibits that show the cost comparison of the water rates and the cost of the increased purchase of water. The water rates, when you look at the spectrum, they're obviously lower than the small communities, but they're all grouped in that, you know, we are a small community. But when you look at those larger communities, Vallejo and Napa and Windsor, those are communities that if you work with them, in the case of Napa, who's the big provider, obviously, in the county, you'll be able to bring those costs down. I know it. I'll also include this comment, that this is a very dynamic environment. Things are constantly changing. Just tonight, we're learning, which I don't suspect was discussed before, about Calistoga's analysis of how to bring the rates down for low-income residents. Just last week, Lafco, who represents really the county, including the town of Yountville, sent out a notice for a meeting with all the agencies, both the town and the cities and the county, to look at improving governance in the county, and governance includes the work that you, the fine work that you all do for us, the community. Reducing costs, looking at the costs of provision of water or sewer, looking at ways to come together in a district, to form a district, reduce those costs. That meeting is scheduled. It was, I think the request came out last week, so it was proposed to both the town and the cities and county to get together to study that. I'm not so certain that just because you're not going to get 50% protest tonight, that you can't tap the brakes and say, let's look at these things. This is dynamic. We don't have to approve it tonight. Let's complete the hearing, and let's proceed down a path of studying other alternatives that can bring the cost down for the community. We need to figure out ways to support families that are leaving. We need to support our seniors. We need to support low-income. Tap the brakes a little bit. Let's study other alternatives that were not reviewed in the consultant's analysis. And if it comes out that the costs are where they are based on the information you received tonight, then proceed. But let's take some time to look at this. We're only reviewing it since what, I think the town manager talked about it publicly, this process has only been going on for a few months. It hasn't been so long that you can't put a little time between the. It hasn't been so long that you can't put, put a little time between the, tonight and the ultimate decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckert. Who's next?
Chuck Ainsworth, 8 Foxglove. I get, my question's kind of simple. What the heck happened to all the water at Rector Reservoir? Well, I mean, we've, all of a sudden, I hear the guy, the secretary, say by August, we could be in dire need. And I'm thinking, geez, we had four years of drought, I'm 12, 2012 to 16. We had a lot of concerns. The water's going down, but there was no, you know, fear, "Oh, my God, we're going to run out." And we certainly filled the reservoir up in 2017. I saw the stuff coming over the waterfall. And now, all of a sudden, this gentleman, the secretary, comes up and says, "Boy, by August, we may be out of water. We could even go below the pipe." I mean, that, it just doesn't seem feasible. We lost all that water. That's only my question. I, I have no problem with the raising the rates. If you guys got higher costs, then I think you probably should do that. But the water, kind of a problem.
Thank you. And Steve, I'm not sure what all we can share on behalf of the Veterans Home. Is there anything you can explain about that status?
I really have no information other than to confirm what the secretary said. The town does not operate the, the reservoir, so we can't necessarily answer that question directly. I do know that the Veterans Home and CDVA are analyzing it and trying to understand the situation to where they're at right now, but I, I can't give you an answer as to what happened to the water.
Well, so, just a little bit of information, and it's limited what we can offer you, and it really needs to come from Calvet in any greater detail, but there has been, as Calistoga dealt with and St. Helena has dealt with, now the Veterans Home in Yountville are dealing with a lawsuit from a, a group of individuals that are challenging how reservoirs are being operated and how much water needs to be released for fish habitat. And that has related specifically to the release of water at Rector. So, as the secretary said, what levels specifically are required to release to abide by that legal challenge remains to be analyzed, but that speaks a little bit to, to your question, Mr. Ainsworth. Okay. Mr. Donsker.
Bruce Donsker, 22 Landy Way. Just a question. Did I understand this could be questions as well as comments?
Yes. You have five minutes to speak on the issue.
So, I'd bet a cup of coffee that the answer on Rector is, it sounds like this is the first time we've had the equipment to do the measurement. So, we may have been this way for five years and are just now learning about it if this is the first year we've measured it. Just a thought. In terms, a second question. Prop 218, I understand the process we're going through is for that, and you need to go through Proposition 218 for a rate increase. Does it have, I had not heard and read that it had to be five years, that you could do a one-year Proposition 218.
If you have a series of questions, feel free to ask them all, then we'll answer them.
That was the only question. Okay. All right.
And we'll have our attorney answer that when you're finished with your comments. So, not cut into your time.
Thank you. In addition, I don't hear anyone saying that we don't need these infrastructures. We, we need them. They're real, but money needs to be spent. My concern and what I wanted to talk about is I'm disappointed to some extent in the way the town has approached giving us information and disappointed in the alternatives that are out there. Okay? I'll show a few things here. You folks are all very familiar with this. It was in our handout. It was shown tonight.
Mr. Donsker, if you could, if you're addressing the council, you need to be on the microphone also.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay. These numbers are true. You see two numbers here, where it is today and where it's going to be after the rate increases. True statement, okay? For the first year. So, this number shows year one. It does not show year two compounded onto year one and year three and year four and year five. When you do that, you are up to $113, and you are now no longer one of the lowest rates around. And even though the statement is true on these two charts, I just question whether we've gotten the real information on the impact of these increases. Another statement that we've heard a lot of, which is a true statement, our hands are tied. This is the law. It was passed by California Supreme Court in terms of San Juan Capistrano, in terms of the water and the water rates have to be rech- rechanged. Again, a true statement. But when you look at where the increases are, again, these are right out of that handout, our increases are in five different areas, three of which are associated with water and two of which are associated with wastewater. All of those are going up.
Mr. Donsker, could you please address the council and into the microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
But I feel, I'm going to show it this way, if that's right, because you're familiar with it or not. So, in terms of where we are restricted by the law, it is the item that is in red only, the, the water usage charge. That is the only one that is controlled by the law. The other four are at the discretion of the town to be making these increases, and I don't, I just don't feel that that has been explained well enough. In addition, I know when I first looked at these tables, I got a real nice, warm, comfortable, comfortable feeling, you know? $2 a month more here, $6 a month more here, $4 a month more here. All of that is true, and these numbers in here are very accurate, but what I feel has not been explained well enough is what happens when you go from here to here. And when you do that, we heard tonight that our water today rates are 1,600 a month, or 1,600 a year. They are going to be, by these charts, by these numbers in here, $2,314 a year. So, we're having a $758 increase between what we are paying today and what we are paying in five years. And it just seems to me the town could have said, "Hey, folks, this thing is really complex. It's seven pages long. Here's the bottom line." But I've never heard the bottom line. We, we're expecting us to be able to go through and understand all of this, and I just don't feel that, that the town has been able to really see the impact of this. The last one, real quick, we talked, we've talked about you cannot mix general funds and enterprise funds. It's a true statement. You cannot. What we heard two weeks ago was that you can take money from the general fund and put it towards capital projects in the enterprise fund. And I don't think we've ever heard the town say that, and that has caused us to overlook a lot of things that I think, I've heard other people say tonight, are the alternatives. Yes, there are. There's a half a million dollars in the budget for a new pedestrian path. There's $200,000 in there for a new parking. There's $300,000 in there for a trash enclosure and a community center. And I just feel that the town has not taken the time to say, "We have an infrastructure problem here that is different than what we've had before. We need to look at the benefits of some of these capital budgets items versus a benefit the, for the entire town by putting it towards wastewater." Two seconds left.
Well timed.
Okay. I had more, but.
We all wanted to see what happened when it went to zero, so. Thank you.
It stops on red.
Yes. Who's next? Oh, yeah, we do have Gary, the question about the five-year 218 process.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So, Proposition 218 allows for planning no further out than five years. Part of that is a practical consideration. It's difficult for the engineers report, the rate study, to determine what the cost of providing the service is going to be much past that. Part of it is also because the rate study and the engineers' report can be expensive and time-consuming, also for staff. And another part of that is about voter fatigue. So, in theory, yes, you can have this done every year. It requires a separate rate study, separate notice, separate protest proceeding, all of that process to go through. So, yes.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Walbert.
Okay. Dear Mayor, council members, Steve, Joe, I was very disappointed last two, or, last Tuesday, or when we came in for the workshop meeting, I, was it last Tuesday, a week, two weeks ago? With the town advertised as a workshop for rate increase for our water, I came to the workshop expecting to hear ideas from the town and residents on creative ways to provide water and sewer services and budget it wisely. I ended up being very disappointed to find out it was a meeting the town put on to tell us how they're going to raise our rates for the next five years. I am not opposed to raise, you know, to have increased, to pay increased rates on water and sewer, but I just felt like I was misinformed. I walked away from the meeting unhappy that the residents weren't there to be listened to but to be lectured at. The feeling I got was the town had already decided what they wanted to do, and they really didn't care what the residents had to say. Moreover, the town took the majority of the time telling us how they planned to do it, and not all the residents' voices were heard. That is not the definition of a workshop. I hope the council will take it into consideration that there needs to be more time to discuss this rate increase and can, come up with creative ways to deal with water and sewer services in the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who's next? Anyone else? Anyone else? Last chance. Anyone else going to speak? Once we close the public hearing and you raise your hand, it's too late. Gary?
Yeah, I would just add before closing the public hearing, I might suggest if anyone here has a protest ballot and has not yet submitted it, to have the opportunity to bring it up because once it is closed, that will be it.
Right. There is a box up here. If you have a form you have not yet submitted and would like to do so? Mr. Dorenbecker, are you coming up to speak?
Is there still time?
There is.
All right.
You barely, you barely made it.
I know. John Dorenbecker, 1870 Oak Circle, and I just had a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, just a sec. Could we stop the conversation off in the audience, please? Excuse me. It is difficult to hear the speaker that's at the podium. Thank you.
Just had a couple of questions and points. I noticed on the water rate projected increase in the expenses to purchase the water of 7.5 percent per year, yet the two previous years to this most recent one, there was a, an 8 percent increase each of those years, so that's pretty close. However, this last year, we've had a 27 percent increase in the cost of the water from the Veterans Home. It's gone from $944 per, was it 1,000 gallons? To $1,202. So, the projected increase of 7.5 percent may in fact be underestimated based on the most recent increases from the Veterans Home, and now we learn that we don't have as much water up there as we thought, which is a bit of a surprise to all of us and couldn't have come at a worse time. I share Charles's question of how did that happen? And I guess we just don't know. The question I have is, has the town looked seriously at wells, drilling wells? I know we have one for emergency purposes. I know they put one out here on Fennel Road just the last week. We've been listening to them drilling away. Is it possible that the town could acquire water from other sources other than the Veterans Home and our other current sources through drilling wells or other contracts? I mean, if we're going to get a 30 percent increase or 27 percent increase this year, why do we think it's only going to be 7 and 1/2 percent a year going forward? Water is going to continue to be a critical issue in the state and in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Steve, if you want to respond to the alternative sources question?
Well, I think Mr. Dorenbecker brings up a, a really great question. We have an emergency well. I will point out that the current land use policies in Napa County require that the urban agencies are going to not use wells. So, that's been a policy adopted. It, it does come with a cost factor because your point's very valid. We will be using our emergency well. The well that you were talking about was built just outside of the town limits and is a private property. We do have some larger landowners that still have maintained their wells, but I will just say, from an agricultural perspective, the current Napa County urban versus the agricultural policy is that the urban areas are using reservoirs and purchased water supply, not using wells. And that's, that may be a policy that should be reviewed at the county level, but right now, I would say that that's also, when you look at the groundwater management, that's not something that the agricultural interests would be overly supportive of. But that is certainly something that may need to be part of a regional. I'll also address the, part of the big increase in the on-time expense was as a result of the ruptured break. If you may recall, last winter, there was a waterline break right at the, the dam, and the state doesn't do what we do with capital planning. They, they build us for the full price of the repair, so that had a spike. And to your point, if you looked at the water purchases, you'll see some years that went up, some years that came back. However, having said that, I would just, as I've said to a lot of people, that is the one thing that I have a bit of a concern about is that we don't control and operate the treatment plant and the water supply, and if the cost goes up, you know, that is what it is. Now, I think the idea of trying to proactively look at additional relationships and structures all makes sense. We do have an agreement with the City of Napa that allows for some limited purchase as well as for the ability for the City of Napa to act as our agent in purchasing water on the spot market.
Thank you. Last chance. Anyone that has not spoken, like to speak?
I thought I'd said everything I had to say. My name is Billy Hewitt, 9 Landy Way. But tonight, we've had a lot of new evidence and additional information. I mean, I've heard it from back here. I assume, you know, some of you might not have known everything that the gentleman from the Veterans Home had to say. It seems like with a lot of new evidence and a lot of additional information, we need more time to study this process. Now, you're our elected officials, and you have a big burden on your shoulders to make the decisions for the safety and the well-being of all the citizenry of town. And the, I understand that costing of running a town is very expensive, but when the sheriff's protection price goes up, we're not asked to pay for that. When the fire protection goes up, we, as the citizens, are not asked to pay additional for that. But with the water, if we separated the infrastructure, then we wouldn't have to pay for that also. So, I'm appealing, just as the other people have, that we consider it during the budget hearings, which I, I know are coming up soon, that you might have expenses spent on the infrastructure. That's really all the additional. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last, last chance. Anyone else? So, Gary, do I close the public hearing before checking the ballots or after?
After.
Okay. So, if the deputy clerk could inform the council of the estimated non-verified vote count or protest count?
So, as of 5:03 PM today, we had 264 non-validated forms submitted, and I can...
There, there are four, according to prayer.
Four. And then that would bring our count to 268 not validated protest forms.
And when we're saying not validated, what would have to happen, if there were 441 protests, we would be obligated to pause on the public hearing, have the protests matched with every property owner or renter that is paying the water and wastewater bills to see if they are in fact valid, if people had accidentally entered multiple times, or if a resident who doesn't pay a water bill had protested. There are several conditions that would have invalidated protests. Since there are 200 and, what was the total, 200 and?
268.
268. That falls well short of the 441 that would require any additional analysis of the protest ballot. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Gary, is that satisfactory?
Correct.
I know. Close the public hearing and encourage deliberation by town council. Any additional guidance, Gary or Steve, you want to give the council during the deliberation?
The only caveat that I do want to provide you is that as you move into your deliberations, you have the option to look at the proposed rate structure. You have the option... You have the option to look at something different than the proposed rate structure, provided that you do not exceed the amounts that were identified in the proposed maximum rate.
And a reminder to the audience as well as the council, if we adopt the proposed numbers of 7 percent and 12 percent, that does not automatically guarantee that every year, those numbers will be achieved. It is a maximum. It's a ceiling that will be evaluated by the council and staff every year. We talked earlier about what circumstances might change that would allow us to reconsider the maximum number each year.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a good footnote because I've heard from some folks say, maybe there'd be a regional district, maybe there'll be this, maybe we should use a TOT. The only thing I want to bring out is, we have the current costs. We haven't done anything to address. Avoiding those is only going to make an expenditure costlier down the road. But what I would say is, if the council was to look at and continue a dialogue on some of these alternatives, and we found something different, then that could be used to potentially lower or offset the proposed maximum rates perhaps in year two or three. So I want to present the situation slightly different than perhaps some folks have presented because if you were to find a different funding source, use debt, you know, I've had some people suggest privatization, regional partnerships. A lot of those have, you know, they don't happen in three months. So I just want to be real candid. If we're looking at something like that, that's not going to go, that's not going to go into place right away. If the council was to look at a general fund subsidy and change its current policy that's been in place since 2010, certainly those are things that are more timely. But if you look at it as a proposed maximum, and something changes three years down the road, then you can lower the rates from what they've been established.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll invite Councilmember Doran to begin comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Before comments, my comments, may I just follow up on a question that one of our residents asked? Does the San Juan Capistrano case also apply to infrastructure as well as rates, use of water?
So the short answer is yes. That case says that the cost of providing the service, which can include infrastructure but also purchasing water, whatever the total cost is, cannot be different for a class of users unless you can justify that difference based on the actual cost of providing the service. So you can create tiers if you can show that the higher tier costs more because of some reason that it costs more to have the town provide the service there. So it's not an absolute ban on tiered rates, but they do have to be cost justified. And it applies to infrastructure because infrastructure is part of the cost of providing the service. Water can't get there without the pipe.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming tonight. It's really gratifying to see citizens come out like this. And thank you to the staff for all the work you've put into this. I know, I'm one of five council members and ever how many residents. I know you fielded a lot of questions. I really appreciate it. So that said, I am encouraged because one thing that I have heard out in the community and that I hear tonight is, a good starting point is, we all agree there is going to be a rate increase. And I think that's an excellent starting point. What I have heard in the more negative is, is the rate, are the rates that we're proposing, are they justified? How did we come up with them? There hasn't been sufficient creativity in how we are proposing to pay for them or maybe move money around. I think although we haven't received 441 protests, we have received more than 260. I think that's certainly a clear bell for us to sit up and take notice. And I'm pretty sure, I, most of you know, I live in Rancho. I've had a lot of people approach me. We were not entitled to protest, but I think if we had been entitled to protest, I know a number of people who would. So I think there are people out there with really bona fide questions and very reasonable opinions. And it's our job to try to, as Ms. Hewitt put it, to shoulder the burden of assimilating those and addressing them and making all of the pieces fit together. So I have taken a lot of time to look at this and study it. I've done more math than I ever thought I'd do as an adult. Although we have a lot of information, our ad hoc has looked at options. I do think before we make this long-term decision or as we make it, there are a lot of things that we still don't know. Some of these have been mentioned tonight, but I'm just going to reiterate them as I go through my personal list. Status of our water supply at Veterans Home, we've heard that tonight. Will we have plenty of water? Will we not? Will it cost more? Those are, that's a big question. Something not mentioned tonight is we, but we know about it. The Cowperse is changing its analytics as to how we're going to be looking at pension and post-employment benefit funding. How will that affect a draw on our pension, on our general fund? Certainly, that probably will be more money rather than less. Something that Mr. Dorenbecker mentioned, we had a significant increase last year from our cost of water from the vets home. Is that a one-off? Will there be another main break next year? Who knows? So is this, was it just a one-time deal? Or is it a glimpse of our future to come as everyone's system continue to age and fail? On the other hand, when we look at that, our usage has been decreasing over the last two or three years. So that has helped to deflate our purchase costs of water. But have we hit bottom on that? Are we going to continue conserving? Or is, are we leveling off? Again, very difficult to estimate, sitting here today, these really important variables. Our Public Works Director has taken us through our CIP. I would note that when I did a side-by-side comparison, although the numbers were close, Mr. Tagliabashi's numbers did not exactly match the numbers that we had in our rate analysis. Whether that's just a rounding error or something to be looked at, that is something out there. Also, as we look at CIP, we all know, everybody knows, it's an estimate. Some of them are going to be on, some of them are going to be off. What we do know about our capital issues is, we have an old system. Some parts are significantly old, and some are failing now, some are going to fail very soon, some are failing before their time. What we don't know is exactly how much it costs. Will it be $413,000 to fix that main? Or will it end up being $500,000? Or will it end up, maybe we can do something less? That brings me to my next point of construction costs. Right now, as we look at CIP and try to decide to do when we let the drought contingency fund come in, construction is booming. And the fire has also, I think unfortunately, driven prices up. We should probably look at, can we prudently and safely shift some of our capital burdens to a later time and flatten the curve even more on our rate increases? The town manager touched on, and something I have discussed, is I don't know that we have looked recently at perhaps operating our system in a different way. Maybe we could partner up with some other jurisdictions. Maybe that would work, maybe that wouldn't. Again, this is one of the things we don't know. I think some of our residents raised, again, another thing, perhaps we need to delve more closely into the actual expense figures that we used in the rate analysis. Are some of those things, like, should they actually be shifted to other pockets of money other than the one the ratepayers are paying into? Should some of them be moved to the general fund or some other funds? Also, the Calistoga deal, that would be out of the general fund. So that, we have not had a chance to look at that and see, because I know some of us are concerned, including many of our residents, are concerned about the equity and justice of the system, especially for our financially challenged ratepayers. And I totally get that every time we do a forecast, we're using best figures available. I get that. I get, we can't sit here today and say, well, what if, what if, what if? But we also, on the other hand, we have to do that. And we have to try to get the best answers we can right now. And I think that there is a way to honor what our residents are saying and hoping for and expecting from us, and what we, as the council, must do in our duty, and as Ms. Hewitt said, shoulder our burden to make sure we have enough money to keep our systems running safely and using best practices. I really think there's a way to do it. So this is how I think we can do it. And this is my thinking tonight as we begin our deliberations. So right now, we're at 7 percent maximum per year per water, 12 percent maximum per year for sewer. That's for the next five years. But we all understand those are the maximums. And we also all understand that those are made possible only by the fact that we have already committed to put $200,000 from our drought contingency fund to help buy down the rates that our ratepayers, including us sitting up here, will pay. So I'm thinking that tonight, we could set a specific increase for, and this kind of goes to Vice Mayor Dorenbecker's statement, we could set a specific increase for the next nine months, from March 1 through December 31, 2018. And we could take the $40,000 from the drought contingency fund, which we were going to have five years at $200,000. We could go ahead and take the first $40,000, put it toward the rates. If we wanted to, we could take another $10,000 from general fund. As I read our protocol, it says that we expect primarily for rate increases or for services to be funded. So that would give us $50,000. And I didn't do the math on that, but it would shave down the 7 and the 12 at least for this first year, for this first nine months. And then at our March meeting, I would, I think it would be really timely to come up with a citizen council committee. And I know when we first started talking about rate changes, it's been a long time ago because I was on the back row reporting for the Sun. And we talked about adding some citizens to that ad hoc committee. And this may be the time to do it. I think we could have, I think we would have to look at all tiers. Let's see, residential, commercial, and multifamily. We would have our two council members on there. We could authorize them to have some amount of money to spend if you needed calculations or consultants. And the key is, this committee would work in the short term during this nine-month of the first rate increase. And they would come back to us in September and say, here are our recommendations. And they could look at anything I've talked about, they could look at anything anybody else here has talked about, anything that comes up. But let's get some involvement. We're very lucky to have people who want to be involved, and let's get them involved. And the more heads on this, the better. I think we should include in whatever motion tonight that we make, a commitment that whenever we have a rate adjustment in the next five years, we have a public hearing prior to voting on that, so that we can take comment, again, like we did tonight. As the resolution currently reads, it says it's automatic. And I would suggest that we should put in there, it is a permissive increase and will be imposed using the maximum, a permissive maximum, and that the actual rate will be determined on a year-by-year basis after a public hearing. I know I've, I talk kind of fast, pumped out a lot of ideas, I pumped out a lot of information. I just want to be clear before we go to further deliberation. I am not saying, and I am not asking for, a new committee to be formed to retrace where the ad hoc and the staff and consultants have already gone. There's a lot of good work. We have a lot of good information. I am not saying throw out our rate study and start again. I am saying we have over 260 ratepayers. They have bona fide questions and concerns about how much of the maximum proposed increases might actually need to be imposed and the best ways to fund those. I am saying, I'm excited that we have citizens who are interested and willing to participate. And I think we have an opportunity tonight to figure out, to put everybody's heads together without doing violence to keeping our system running for the next nine months or beyond because the maximums will be the maximums. But we have an opportunity here to figure out how to implement all of this because we all seem to recognize the need for the rate increase. It's the question of how to do it. The words I have heard are equitable, creative, and one I've added, and I've also heard tonight, realistic. I like all those words. I think they can all work together. And when the time comes, I plan to suggest, subject to y'all's thoughts on it, some sort of a motion to put all this in one piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham.
Good thing I typed this. So let me start by saying that I've been told in the past that I do not always fully explain my process for arriving at my voting decisions, and this will not be one of those times. I've always stated that one of the best things about being a council member is that I'm a more informed citizen. And that is definitely the case here concerning water and sewer in Yonville. And I'm guessing it's the same for many of you here. So I want everyone to understand my process of why and where I stand on the water and wastewater rates. So for the town's two enterprise funds, the town has prepared and budgeted for the next five years. We've listed the capital improvements that need to take place for water and wastewater. We all know that it will be a $758 increase over the next five years. This increase is based on research, budget, and the capital improvements. This enterprise fund covers its expenses, and we are not asking for, nor are we allowed to make a profit on this. And keep in mind, for those who have suggested to me that we sell the water and wastewater treatment facilities to a private company, a private company does not fall under those same parameters. So they would be making a profit. Maybe there is a future opportunity for all of Napa Valley to create a single agency, and that is definitely in the future. But now, we need to cover our expenses and move forward with our capital improvement projects. This is also an economy of scale issues. We have about 884 water accounts in Yonville, with the highest percentage being residential users. So as a result, our capital improvement plan is spread over fewer accounts. As a side note, I would like to invite all of you to tour the water and wastewater treatment plant with me. I've done it once. It's amazing. My ad is in the Yonville Sun every two weeks, and you can contact me, and I'd be happy to take you out there. The staff's amazing, and the process is amazing. So we need to also purchase 100 percent of our water. We are purchasing it from the Veterans Home, a state entity. You all saw the graph on the increase in water costs every year. And given this current situation with the reservoir that a lot of us have heard first thing about tonight, we will continue to see the cost rise exponentially. The time has come that possibly our drought reserve fund will come into play. If we have to purchase water from Napa, it will be even higher than our current budgeted numbers that you've seen tonight. And this is exactly what the drought reserve fund is for, to purchase water and not to subsidize monthly water and sewer rates. So the businesses, specifically the hotels in town, has come up a lot. And they are paying their fair share for water, just like all of us are in this room. We have 10 hotel properties in Yonville. On average, a single-family home is paying $137.06, and a smaller hotel is paying $701, and a larger hotel is paying over $2,200. And for the past seven years, these hotels have been on a higher tier rate, which we're no longer allowed to do. So as a result, they were paying more than everybody else and actually paying a lot of our extra water bills. Last year, the hotels paid into the general fund over $6.5 million. These hotels are paying for our fire department, our police, and our roads. Like was pointed out from the last speaker this evening, this is not being paid by the town people. This is being paid majority by the TOT in this town, the bed tax. The quality of life we all enjoy in Yonville is because of the TOT that is left behind by the visitors. And now, an idea has been floated to increase the TOT to subsidize water. Besides being potentially illegal because one sector of the community is paying for another sector for water and wastewater, I will go on record as stating that I oppose this idea. Once again, the hotels are funding our community. The hotels are paying for their water and wastewater usage. The TOT is increasing at a slower pace and beginning to level off. And now is not the time to experiment with an increase in TOT and send groups and tourists to Napa, Santa Elena, and Calistoga. And I'll also note through more... And I'll also note, through more research, there are single residential users in Yonville that are using more water than some of our smaller ends. The exact ends that some would propose we increase a tax on to subsidize our water use. So, on December 5, I voted no on the motion to move forward with the 7% increase with the subsidy, because I wanted option one, with the rates to be increased 8.5%, with no subsidy that would cover all expenses. Notably, in 2010, the town council voted to increase water and sewer rates up to 16% and remove all general fund subsidy. Subsidy from the general fund is not a viable, fiscally responsible, long-term option for any city or town. It was not in 2010, and it definitely is not now. The TOT is showing a smaller percentage of growth. And as any of you who come to these meetings know, I am an eternal optimist when it comes to hospitality, but the fire and police costs continue to rise every year. So, I've received feedback from townspeople concerning how our budget looks and how to better slice the pie. I've been criticized over the amount of money spent on Veterans Park. Arts in Yonville, many of you believe the town spends too much money on art as well. Tonight, the comments were made. Only five minutes of comments, more time for this discussion. I want to be clear, this process does not happen and did not happen in a vacuum. I'll be the first to admit, and the town staff knows this, this was not the town's finest work. But all the information has been out there, and it's been available. So, what is the answer here? I find it interesting that Councilmember Dorman and I both feel the same way, I just see it as a different way to get there. I would suggest that all of you become part of the budget process. At the very least, the 268 signers of the protest forums. This is the immediate opportunity for involvement. That is where we, it should all next be played out, this discussion. We don't need to put together an advisory committee, we don't need to wait. If you want to cut, if you want the pie to be cut differently, then that is the time to be having the discussions at these budget meetings. And guess what? May 8 at 9:30 a.m., and May 22 at 1 p.m., we'll already be having budget meetings. As you've heard, the rates can be evaluated at these budget meetings. So, decisions that are being made now, we can still evaluate it at the budget meetings. We can tap the brakes at the budget meetings. Should we have a low-income assistance program for water and wastewater? These are discussions that can be part of the public discussion at these budget meetings, which are coming up in two months. Myself being a part of two budget processes thus far, I continue to learn about the town of Yonville. And I will note that of all the budget meetings I've been at, there's been two people that I can remember that ever showed up to any of the meetings. One of them's in the room, and she writes for the paper. So, and the other one isn't even here. So, here's my position. I will fully support the majority vote that was made on December 5 and vote for the 7% rate increase with the $200,000 subsidy. The subsidy is coming from the drought reserve fund, not the general fund. My initial process was to vote no, because I'm against the subsidy, but the need for an increase is the more important factor in this determination. And the subsidy is a one-time paydown. I will not support any further subsidies from the general fund or drought reserve fund of the water and wastewater funds beyond this initial $200,000. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I'd like to start by thanking everybody who came tonight and cheering, having the guts to stand up and give us your opinions. I appreciate all the suggestions and comments, and I'd like to spend a little time talking. I certainly have been here during those meetings and during our very initial discussions, and I've also spent quite a bit of time talking to many residents. Everybody knows my phone number, I get phone calls, and I see somebody in the audience, so I actually reached out, and I made phone calls to people too, that I saw here last time. So, these aren't the only comments that we get, and I do want to say that I'm sure every one of our other council members, they talk to staff, they talk to other residents. And when I hear that people think that we're not listening, I do understand how you feel that way, but I know from sitting here in this seat, after many, many long meetings, and many, many meetings, that each one of these council members that you have elected up here care greatly about each item that comes up, and they do share your concerns. And it's always very important to each one of us that we try to get it right. We try to get it right for our residents, and our businesses, and our visitors together. We have to balance all of that. Could our workshop two weeks ago have been better? Yeah, it definitely could have. We could have done a better job, and I apologize for that. We don't always get it right when it comes to some of these things, too. We do it every five years, so I apologize. So, some of the stuff that, I'm just going to summarize some of the top items that I certainly had discussions about with people, what I've heard here. First one is use of the general funds. Yes, the general funds were used in the past to subsidize rates, but in 2010, the council decided this was no longer a prudent policy, because it wasn't financially sustainable. When there are downturns, what's the first thing that are going to go? Our subsidies. We have to pay the fire and the police, and we have to do the critical elements that where we serve our residents as a town. So, when we did this, that's when there, in 2010, there was a quite a big increase to the water and the race water rates. Each one went up over 16%, because we're not only paying for the operational costs and the infrastructure, we also, all of us, had to no longer enjoy the benefit of a subsidy. So, rates went up a lot, and those five years are luckily behind us. And I don't want to get into that situation again. It was pretty painful to go through it once, and it's something I don't really want to go through again. A resident today may like the benefit of a subsidy, but a resident tomorrow may pay a very unfair price. We don't take money from our water and our wastewater funds and give it to our general fund. There are many cities out there still doing that. They feel that it's justified, based under Prop 218, because they've spent a lot of general fund money building these systems and paying for pipes, and now they feel that it's fair to actually raise rates higher than the cost of service to pay themselves back. We'll see how that all gets sorted out in the courts, but that is what they're, there are many cities that are doing that. So, we, at the same token, if we don't take money from our water and wastewater funds, I don't believe that we should take money from our general fund and give it to our utility funds. Quid pro quo, fair is fair. Another major topic, I had lots of discussions about, was increasing the TOT. We need people to come here and spend their money. We cannot live, like most cities, on our property taxes. Most cities, their property taxes are 80% of their general fund. Our property taxes are like $1.3 million. That is nowhere near 80% of our general fund. So, this TOT is very unique, and it's critical to Yonville. And some people think, "Well, you know, maybe some visitors aren't going to pay attention if we raise the TOT." Well, you know, maybe that's true, maybe some won't. But I can tell you, some will. And tour operators who book numerous rooms for many nights, they're going to pay attention, because they can go to someplace like Sonoma or Calistoga and see the rates are going to be quite a bit different, and they will make decisions like that. And there is certainly a limit out there to the amount of TOT that we can charge. I really don't know what it is, but I really don't want to find out the hard way, I'll tell you that. According to my rough calculations, we would really need to pay for our rates and the infrastructure. And by the, and I know everybody says, "Oh, I'm fine with paying for just the water." But the vast majority of your rates are really going to this infrastructure. That is where, so when we're really talking about where all this money, that's what really we're talking about, this infrastructure. But anyway, I did a rough calculation, and I could be wrong too, but I calculated that to really pay for all this, you're going to need to increase the TOT by about 2% just to cover this. And if we lose revenue, because visitors decide to stay someplace else, it is going to be very difficult to get them to come back here. And it, I just don't think that is a wise move. I think that while you may have the power to tax the tourists, that power could result in the power to actually harm the well-being of Yonville. So, be very careful when you think about that. It may sound like an easy fix, but there's always unintended consequences to these things. The $2 million drought emergency fund. I also did not want to take any money out of this fund. I certainly didn't know when I voted on that several weeks ago exactly why, but because now, we, as you've all heard tonight, we are really facing a potentially very concerning situation with the low water level in Rector. I don't know how it happened, we just went through almost a five-year drought period, and we seem to have plenty of water, so I don't have any answers any more than you heard tonight. But I can tell you that when the council created this fund, we did not know what emergency was going to come, but we did predict the need to create this emergency fund. And now, here it is. This emergency fund is not where we should be going to first, it should be, it's something that is reserved for emergencies, where we should go to last. We now have a potential situation that none of us predicted, and we cannot predict why we're going to need this in the future. But your town staff and your town council has put this in place. So, these are the important things I think government should do. They need to have emergencies and set aside money in case something serious happens. Then, you, it's not, that's not the time to be riding around and passing the hat. We do this proactively, and I think that's very important. Prop 218, I think we've all heard quite a bit about that. So, some other highlights I would like to mention is, what implications, people ask if we do have subsidies, is that going to help or hurt conservation? That's a very good question. Some experts, economists, say that when actually you have subsidies, you're creating an artificial price for the product you're giving out, and actually, it can, we work in a reverse fashion. People think, "Ah, water's cheap," there goes all their ability to really think about conserving water to keep the rates down. And had lots of topics on, what if we didn't increase the rates at all? I think bearing the cost that that would have to us as a community would be much worse than putting these rates in place now. Our infrastructure would continue to deteriorate, and we could see much worse than what we've seen in the past. And the cavalry's not going to come to save us. We're all in this together, and rates would just be much higher in the future if we don't start fixing our problems today. So, those are my comments. I do support the rate increases, we will. These, again, are maximum rates that we are putting in place that we can charge this evening, if the council agrees. And there will be lots of discussion. I'm very happy that Councilmember Durham talked about the budget. Please, you came out for these, so be participating, and if you've got some comments when we go through those budget meetings that you would like to see, bring them up. We have nice, long meetings, you'll have plenty of time to talk. So, thanks again for your comments and being here for tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I would like to add my thanks to you for all of you coming out. I know that this is, and I'll say goodnight to the short hitters who are leaving, but this is an important discussion to have, and a difficult one, and as has been mentioned, we are moving into the budget-making season now. So, we welcome you to come. Those meetings are open to the public, in case anybody had a question about that, and you're welcome to come. I, too, want to apologize, because the workshop that we held, I think a workshop sort of means more dialogue rather than presentations and having to listen and only getting three minutes to speak. So, I add my apologies to Councilmember Moeller's. I don't think that that went well, and I heard about it from a lot of people, how disappointed they were, in addition to what I read in the newspaper. And I felt that way that evening, and I'm sorry. This is a time of great uncertainty on many fronts, and the latest of which is the Rector Reservoir that Secretary Ambossiani talked about this evening. We did just learn about that. Now, I wanted to also thank Mr. Donsker, because he pointed out that perhaps it is not as dire as we are fearing, because there's new equipment in, and now they've been monitoring it, and if for four years, during a major drought, we had enough water, perhaps we're just going to be fine. So, I don't want to stress too much about that at this time, but it's something that they'll be watching and we'll be watching, and you can be sure that we will make every effort, and we will not run out of water in this town, no matter what we have to do. And thank goodness we do have that drought emergency fund, because we may indeed need it. And I don't believe in paying for infrastructure or anything other than water out of that fund. But I wanted to remind ourselves and our town staff that water infrastructure is still part of public works. And so, in the capital improvement program, I think that there's a possibility that we could add funds to help pay with some of the infrastructure costs, so that we can alleviate some of the burden that we are putting on all of us. We also consume the water and pay the bills, and I have my husband and I our water bill right here, and know what it would go up to after five years. So, it is daunting, but I do believe that because of the interest, it is worth taking the time to figure this out together. And so, I support the idea that my colleague, Councilmember Dorman, presented, saying that we should have, we should approve this first round of rate increases through the end of this year, and study what we absolutely need to do, and also look at the creative solutions that possibly are out there by combining forces with the county or the city of Napa, and trying to, you know, work out some private-public partnerships, or public and public partnerships to, that would help them and us, because we're so small that we all have to pay significantly sort of more. There are 75,000 people who live in the town, in the city of Napa. That's why their costs look lower than ours, that they're all paying into it, and we only have, you know, 800 households that pay into it. I also believe that it's very important, I was not going to be able to support this at all if we did not provide for a low-income rate adjustment for people who have a real need, who are, you know, so financially stressed that they couldn't afford water. So, I am delighted when town managers sent me this sample of what Calistoga is providing. I think that, you know, we've got a heart here. We're not trying to drive everyone into the poorhouse with these rate changes that we have to make. But I think that we do need to study more, and we do need to include more of you into the process of these kinds of rate structures, because we're all in this together, but that includes you, not just us. So, if we could, I'm interested to hear what Councilmember Dorman will present as a sort of framework for moving forward. But for the first nine months, I think we should go ahead and make this, approve the -- But for the first nine months, I think we should go ahead and make this, approve the maximum 7% and 12% for the infrastructure, although I, going forward, I do want to examine how we could possibly use some of the funds from the general fund to help not pay all of the cost of the infrastructure, but help pay some of the costs of the infrastructure to, so that we have more money to spend on the water. Water, we live in an area, I'm on the Watershed Information and Conservation Council, and we have had studies that have been ongoing. We live in a region that is becoming more and more arid. We are going to have higher and higher water costs as we go forward. So the more money we can use on the water itself, the better, the happier I will be for all of us. So those are some of my thoughts. I am glad that we have the drought fund. We also have other contingency funds, and it's a good thing that we put money away. And for example, in talking about the Calpers funding and the other, other public employment benefits that we owe to our former employees, we have, we started a contingency fund for that, and we have been very good about putting money in there so that we're not in the kind of position that many cities and towns across this country are, because they have unfunded liabilities from their people who have retired. And the town staff and town management has created a tiered program for our employees so that the younger ones coming aboard are not going to cost as much in their retirement as the, you know, the classic ones who've been around for a long time. So there are difficulties that we have to iron out and work out, but I think we need to move forward to get the rate structure in for this first year and then revisit it. There is no reason why we cannot. And with your participation, we welcome it. And I do invite you to come to the, to the budget meetings. They're four hours of fun and games. But we, you know, I've been through, my very first town council meeting was in 2011, the night we raised the water rates. So I've been through this torture before, and I really want to try and help as many of us as we can by making sure that we do have, you know, people who might have their social security cut. You know, some of our elderly people in the, in the town may need to take advantage of a low interest program or program that we can provide for them. So there are all kinds of things. We want to be creative, and we want to be inclusive, and we want it to work for all of us. That's my, what I'd say.
Thank you. I'm going to start out my comments by saying something I say periodically. Thankfully, it's not all that frequent that I have to say it. But we don't get to lead this community just when it's easy. We get to lead when it's difficult, when we have friends and neighbors sitting out in the audience, looking at us, asking us questions, why are you doing this to us? Remember, we're also, as was mentioned, we're your neighbors, we're your friends, we pay. We are not outsiders coming in, passing judgment. We are part of this community, as I know you know, but we understand that no one ever likes costs to go up. But we have to make very real and rational, practical decisions in the process. I'm going to share some of the talking points, the ideas that I considered while I've been evaluating my thoughts about the increases. One thing that disturbed me the most is when I would hear someone claim that we're close-minded, and we just listen to what the consultant tells us to do. I take great pride, as does, I'm sure, this entire council and previous councils, to be creative, to be proactive, to be as diligent in our analysis and thoughtful in our leadership as humanly possible. I know the countless hours that our staff has put in, well beyond analyzing the report from Bartle Wells, the hours that our staff and the council have responded to many of you in the audience with questions, with comments. So it's beyond the workshop, and I'm actually going to take a different perspective about the workshop that's been getting bashed. I know that if I hadn't led a structured meeting that did run right up to when we had our regular council meeting, 90, 95 minutes, that if I had not regulated that to three minutes per person, not everyone that was there to speak would have been able to speak. Mr. Donskis was the last one to speak, and I unfortunately had to urge him to wrap up because we were already running out of time. I would have heard something different had I let people talk longer or repeatedly, and then some people that weren't able to speak at all would feel like they didn't have their opportunity. I also told folks that if you had something else to say after your three minutes, you are welcome to come back, time permitting, and share that. So I do feel like it's important to have structure when we have this type of dialogue. What I've also seen in workshops is certain individuals will dominate a table or will dominate a room based on what their opinion is, and then those that are not as forceful aren't as heard. And so that's why I ran that workshop slash meeting the way I did. But let me share some of the thoughts that got me to where I'm at tonight. I considered no rate increase at all. Then we have deficits in our water and wastewater funds for any future expenses that are planned or unplanned. I've heard from one or two folks that say, why didn't you see this coming? Well, we don't know what the veterans' home rates are going to be ahead of time. We don't know what infrastructure is going to fail ahead of time. We do look many years in advance. We have many of our capital projects planned, but not all of them. So it's impossible for us to know long into the future what our necessary increases might be. What about lower percentages over the five years? Again, we draw down our fund reserves more quickly, and that puts us at risk. I bet all of you have homeowners insurance, because you don't know when something's going to fail, when there's going to be a catastrophic incident at your home or in the community. And that helps you cover the unexpected. Increasing or decreasing the percentages over the five years, again, draws down fund reserves, and we have very limited number of accounts to share the impacts over time. That's the blessing and the curse of a small community. If we don't put the $200,000 in general fund subsidy, we will probably have to maximize those rates every year, or again, we not only lose our fund balances, but we go in deficits, and then we have no money left for either infrastructure or softening of rates in the future. A higher general fund subsidy, again, means less money for other town projects and priorities, some that are state-mandated, and some that I've been very proud of up here when we have invested in our Veterans Memorial Park, when we have invested in our streets and in the beautification of our town that we take such great pride in. I don't think those are frivolous expenses at all. Increasing TOT or charging businesses more, it's been discussed that that's illegal to charge any class of customer a different rate that can't be justified. Plus, businesses, as Councilmember Durham eloquently pointed out, have been paying higher rates for years, and they have a higher system impact fee already. And I just wonder, for those of you that would like us to raise our TOT, when you go on vacation and you go to a hotel in any other city, and when you get your bill upon checkout, you see you're subsidizing local residents' water bills, how would you feel about that? Privatizing the water system, if you think these rates are challenging and volatile, privatize the water system when it's out of our control and it's a for-profit venture. Cutting capital projects to reduce budget needs in the future, we have an aging infrastructure that's been identified, and we need to invest in that so we can minimize the risk of failures. I've already mentioned what I think about moving general funds from other, quote, "non-essential" projects. We could have held this Prop 218 protest immediately after our decision on December 5th. We chose to wait till the end of the holiday season, and so we've almost doubled the legal requirement for this period to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to participate and educate themselves about the proposals. We've considered incurring debt to cover certain costs. Then we have to worry about where does that debt payment money come from? What is the period of debt financing? You're not really going to get a lot of money for a five-year debt schedule. How much interest would then be incurred? And for which projects could we even incur debt financing? Then I also considered that the state Supreme Court really put us in this situation, when they required that our rate structure change and no longer allowed us to incentivize conservation through our water rates. The new rate structure actually benefits our senior mobile home residents because they are based on a single meter for each park. And these, again, I don't think we could say it often enough, these rates that we're proposing are the maximum possible increases we can consider over each of the next five years. We can evaluate every year incurring costs lower than those maximums if conditions change. Some of those conditions, as our Public Works Director highlighted, we have revenues coming in, we're not sure what they're going to be yet, for Measure T sales tax revenues, Senate Bill 1 transportation tax revenues. If we have rainfall, it reduces the risk of the veterans' home escalating costs of water, or the towns need to purchase water from the city of Napa for drought relief. Looking at Calistoga's low-income water assistance program that's based on PG&E care program, I think has real potential. And that would allow us to evaluate low-income residents in a fair way. They have incurred $15,000 previously and are considering $30,000 from their general fund to help support a percentage of the low-income users' water rates. We don't know yet how many of our Yonville residents would qualify, but I think this council and our staff would certainly be willing to find out, to see what kind of a number that might be, and to look at opportunities to make funds available to help the most challenged with these water rate increases. We also need to remember our veterans' home residents don't pay into our system. They're residents of our town, but they live at the state facility, and so we have even fewer residents that are using the water that are actually paying the complete costs of the water in the system. We need to maintain our water and wastewater funds to have money for future needs, both budgeted and unbudgeted. We, as I said earlier, we don't know when a pipe's going to fail. We don't know exactly what the cost of water will be. We can count on it going up, if not, at least staying where it is. And we don't know what the cost will be from Rector Reservoir maintenance and upgrades over the next several years as that becomes a priority for the veterans' home. Businesses already have been paying more system impact and replacement costs. I don't support adding additional TOT to cover residential and commercial water rates. Utility enterprise funds, by definition, should be supported by customers who use them. I use the analogy of those of us that drive across a bridge, we pay a bridge toll. If you don't drive across the bridge, you don't pay the toll. We all use our water system, and so we should be paying into that system. And I understand that water is much more of a fundamental need than driving across a bridge, but the fundamental definition for me is if we use a service, we should be paying for that service. And delaying the start of the protest period a month longer than required, I do think, gave all of us a chance to evaluate the Bartle Wells report and to work with staff and many of you that provided your feedback to reach the best conclusion that I certainly I can tonight. We also held numerous public meetings and posted dozens, I would say, if not more, announcements on social media and in local newspapers, many more times than required, because we do value transparency here as a council and as a staff. So with all of that, I look at the priority being proactivity rather than hoping something doesn't happen or fail. I don't like the idea of drawing down fund balances. We are very proud of the numerous fund balances that we have, so we are prepared for unforeseen changes in circumstances. As I said, I'm certainly open to looking at the low-income water assistance program idea, but I also believe that we need to be realistic about setting the maximum rates. Every year, we can evaluate whether conditions have changed so we can go below those rates. But I believe that we have set rates that are as reasonable as possible, that can still achieve the outcome that we need. So with that, I am finished with my comments. I'll invite the council, if anyone has any last comments or a motion to be had on the proposal before us tonight.
I'd like to make a motion, please. And I have here for the council and a few copies for the public, my proposed revisions, just because some are somewhat lengthy. So I'm going to go through the proposed revisions first, and once the council gets them and the public gets them, I do also, based on the conversation earlier this evening, I have made a change to the first proposed provision, which would be a new item, put between numbers one and number two in the existing resolution. And it would say, "Funds shall be transferred to each," funds shall be, let's see, "Funds shall be transferred to each of the town's enterprise funds on or before March 15, 2018 as follows," and it should not be each. Funds should be transferred to the town's enterprise funds on or before March 15 as follows, $10,000 from the general fund and $40,000 from the drought contingency fund. So the motion would be a total of $50,000 to be split between the two enterprise funds. All of these funds shall be used to reduce the maximum proposed 7% and 12% increases set forth in the rate study, resulting in the lesser increases set forth in Exhibit A for the period of March 1, 2018 through and including December 31, 2018. Moving on to Item 3 of the resolution, my proposed change in my motion is, instead of saying automatic rate increases, we would say the water rate and wastewater schedule consists of one specific rate increase for the period of March 1, 2018 through and including December 31, 2018, and four proposed maximum rate increases. Also, in a change, a proposed revision in my motion to Item 3, rather than saying the water and wastewater rates shall be adjusted, to say the water and wastewater rates may be adjusted on January 1 of each year. And also, still on Number 3, rather than saying the town shall provide notice to property owners at least 30 days prior, to say the town shall provide general public notice as well as notice to property owners. And to add a sentence to Item 3 that says the town shall hold a properly noticed public hearing prior to imposing any rate increase. I'm also suggesting, because of my desire for a committee, a new language to be inserted between Items 3 and 4. By separate resolution, at its meeting on March 6, 2018, the town council shall appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of single-family residential, commercial, and multifamily development residential rate payers and two council members. The size and charge of said committees shall be noted in the appointment, but shall generally include a cross-section of rate payers charged with the study and refinement of funding any necessary rate increases and related inquiries. The committee shall report findings and recommendations to the council at a public meeting on or before September 30, 2018. Moving on to Item 4, the changes I'm presenting are parallel in Number 3, rather than saying an automatic, we're saying one specific rate increase for the next nine months and then four proposed maximums. Same changes for notice to the general public and our commitment to hold a public hearing before imposing any rate increase. So that is my motion.
So before I ask for a second on that proposed motion, Gary, do you have any comments or concerns about any of the language being proposed?
Yeah, you just have one suggested change to the first full paragraph at the top. I would suggest that the general fund one-time payment go to pay down the sewer increase and that the 25% from the drought contingency fund, because that, as I understand, came from the sale of water rights, go to pay down the proposed water rates. But would that change the rest? It seems permissible. The committee would be a Brown Act committee as well. I'll just note that.
Thank you. And that, I'm fine with that change. I certainly overlooked that. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? We should be using our vote cast.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay. We're going to really freak Julie out now. So just don't do anything. Don't push any buttons yet. Okay. Substitute motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we approve Resolution Number 18-3458, a resolution of the Town of Yountville establishing a revised schedule of water and wastewater rates and charges and miscellaneous water and related utility service fees.
Is there a second to that substitute motion?
I have a second.
Just so you're all, in case you're wondering what's going on right now. So there was a motion and a second, but then a substitute motion was entertained that has also been seconded. So we act, or we discuss and potentially act on the substitute motion first. If that passes, that's what's accepted. If it fails, we go back to the original motion. So that's your municipal education 101 for right now. Discussion on the second, or the substitute motion? Is there any discussion?
So I guess my question is, what don't you like about my motion? If that's an appropriate question. If it's not, I withdraw it.
I can answer if that's appropriate.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember Durham, and then the motioner can also comment.
The money from the general fund, first and foremost. And then, secondly, the separate resolution at its meeting on March... The Town Council shall appoint an ad hoc committee. As I stated before, I firmly believe the process is in place with the budget meetings that are coming up and with the budget process. So that is why.
And Councilmember Mueller, you made the motion.
I agree with that. I think that our process was to have an ad hoc committee. This council made that decision. We abided by that process, and I can tell you, it was a lot of work that we went through. And we came back and explained it all to you, and it just seems now to, change the process that we agreed to, I don't really see the rationale for doing that. And even previously, we had discussed, before we put that process and voted on it, that perhaps we would have the ad hoc committee and outside public there, too. And we discussed that amongst ourselves and decided against that. And I agree that we need to establish these five-year rates. You cannot go out and plan capital projects because we plan them over five years. We don't fund everything immediately. I'm sure we've all, we're going to, I think Joe's going to be talking about that a little bit later, how, and can remind us how we've always been doing that. So I think that this resolution makes a lot of sense, and that's why I made the motion.
Okay. So any further discussion?
Well, just to clarify, my motion also sets the maximum for the five years. As far as the ad hoc committee goes and the public participation, as I said earlier, I sat on the back row. I came forward for public comment, and I asked, will there be citizen representation? I was told, we will discuss that and let you know. I heard nothing about any citizen representation until we got the ad hoc committee report in December. So that's why I feel a committee is very important right now.
Any additional comments? So there is a substitute motion that's been moved and seconded. Julie, are you... Don't let Joe distract you.
I'm trying. Okay, yes, I have done.
We're voting on the substitute motion. So Motioner Mueller seconded Durham. And so if we could get that screen up here, then we're going to vote. This is just to add the drama. You stayed here for hours now. You might as well enjoy it with us. Okay, so please cast your ballot on the screen. So on a three-two vote, the substitute motion does pass, so the original motion is vacated. And so we are accepting the proposal as presented by staff. Sorry, folks, we can just, it gets distracting when we hear you talking in the back. So just to be clear, Steve, could you give a summary of what we have coming up and when in terms of rates?
The first year, we're already in the midst of the current fiscal year, so the rates, as were outlined in Year One, will begin on March 1, showing up on the April bill. And then the future increases are scheduled for January. And then, as indicated, we will go into budget, and we can look at if there's going to be different adjustments made by the council during the budget process. That fiscal year will start July 1. And Year Two begins with the January adjustment. So there's ample opportunity in the budget for the council to continue to provide dialogue on what alternative ideas or input you might have for reducing or offsetting the rates through that process.
I think one of the things you heard from several, I think it was at least three council members, to look into the low-income assistance program to see, by the time we have our first budget meeting or whenever we're talking about that category.
I mean, what I would say, I think it's certainly consistent for you to provide consensus direction. We're happy to bring up forward a project, and I can even do that sooner. That doesn't have to necessarily wait for the budget. I can work on... I don't want to promise you 3.6, it may be 3.20, but we'll certainly try to have it with one of those two agendas.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I'm going to call for a five-minute break for council and the audience. We'll be back here. And we are back, and we'll get started with Item 10A, our capital improvement program.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. Tonight, we have for you the 2018-19, 2022-23 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. I think it's important to note, the majority of the information is in the staff report. The PowerPoint tonight will be the upcoming 18-19 Capital Improvement Program and anything that's new to the five-year program. The budget totals this year, as noted in the staff report, it's up almost $1 million, driven mainly by two projects. The capital fund is down a little bit, and we also have Measure T coming online, which will provide a substantial fund for us to be able to do road projects. And that is one of the projects that is driving this budget a little bit substantially more than last year, because we didn't do any road projects last year. Also, the Water Capital Fund, Fund 60, you'll notice that that's up a good bit. And again, that's related to the Yount Street project, but will also be a part of the Measure T roadwork. That part of the project is driven by that Measure T fund. Emergency generator for Community Center/Community Hall. Over the past couple of years, we've noticed an increased use of the Community Center/Community Hall as both the gathering place for our residents, both during times of flood, heat, and most recently, the fire. The current emergency generator that we have is a portable unit. It does power the community hall. However, it is not capable of powering the community center. The majority, it seems like that we need this additional capacity to be able to service both of these facilities. This project is projected to be $150,000. Post office and Sheriff's Annex Roofing Replacement. Ruffs typically last about 20 to 25 years. We have been patching this one together for the last three. We're not going to get another year's worth of wear out of it. What we're planning on doing is putting a roof that's similar to the one in the picture, which is community center and community hall style roof, known as a standing seam roof. These roofs service life in excess of 50 years. The company that we have been in talks with, that has a joint purchasing agreement with the state, and it's a national, it's actually a nationwide purchasing agreement. They come out for the first 35 years of the product and do an inspection every year and warranty it for the first 35 years. So it's going to last in excess of 50, but for the first 35, we have a guarantee in place with an annual inspection. That is $250,000. Hopper Creek Pedestrian Path and Bridge from Oak Circle to Mission. This project is actually part of a larger grant fund that was pushed back two years ago due to lack of funding. We were put back in the queue. We knew that this project was coming along. This first year will be designed and permitting. It's $50,000, followed up by the construction phase in 1920. That construction phase is estimated to be at $500,000. That entire $500,000 is a grant fund.
Quick question? No? Okay.
Curb gutter and sidewalk replacement. So as we talked about earlier, SB1 is coming online. This is an addition to the previous gas tax. It's, for lack of a better term, a gas tax enhancement for over the past three years plus. Gas tax has been less and less each year, mainly driven by two things. People, cars are getting better gas mileage, and the gas tax hadn't kept up with the cost of doing these projects. So the legislature has enacted SB1. Our plan is to use the SB1 funds, $50,000 estimate right now, to do curb gutter and sidewalk replacement. This would be in front of the paving project, so we would try to get these curb gutter and sidewalk projects done. And that's a two-part benefit. Number one, we would be doing that mostly in-house, so the contractor who's doing the paving wouldn't be in control of the project or the timeline. And number two, we could get it done before the project, so it would actually hopefully decrease the amount of inconvenience that our residents and visitors have for our paving program on the annual basis, which brings us up to the annual paving program. This year, we're looking at trying to pave Yount Street. It's one of the lowest PCI Payment Condition Index scores in town. It's also heavily traveled. As you can see from this slide, $432,000. That estimate is actually going up a little bit in Measure T funds. We're going to also use gas tax funds. We do have to have each of these funds in a separate account for auditing purposes, but it's going to be somewhere in the $530,000 range, I would imagine, for the two of them, and that will completely reconstruct Yount Street from Washington Street to Mount. So that would complete the piece of Yount Street. I think three, maybe four years ago, council did a similar improvement from Mount Street out to Madison. So this would complete that segment of road, essentially putting in a 25-year road and travelway. Also included in this year's upcoming projects and programs, ADA Accessibility Improvement Program. That's annually budgeted at $100,000. And I think one of the questions last year, I believe it was from Councilmember Dorman, was asking about this fund balance. And it's the same type of programming as we have done in the past, which if we have the need and the projects are available, then we fund it. And if not, the project goes back to fund balance. So anything unused goes back into the general fund fund balance. The GIS mapping improvements is in the same category as the Accessibility Improvements Program, meaning that if we don't use all of the funds, then those funds go back into general fund as well. Some of the improvements that we're planning on doing for the GIS mapping improvements program are to continue to improve the MyVille app. We are also bringing Acela, our Work Order and Asset Management Program onboard. We're going to start putting in the sandbox this month with full implementation by the middle of next month. That is a GIS-capable program, so we will be using the funds for our GIS to help manage that asset management program and make it more functional for the crews and for the admin engineering staff. Townwide Drainage and Improvement Program, again, that's an annual program as well. $15,000 is programmed for that, for FY 18-19. A variety of improvements. So last year, one of the things that we improved was some of the drainage around Washington and Padrone. We're going to continue to try to make that improvement. We're not quite there in that little segment on Padrone, but we're going to continue to work on it. So that's just a typical example. Also, Napa County Flood Control District helps us with cleaning the Hopper Creek drainage area, so some of this fund will go to subsidize some of that work. Traffic calming, $20,000 is programmed for upcoming FY 18-19. An example of what we did in the last fiscal year was we're replacing the radar feedback signs on Yountville Cross Road, the one on Washington at French Laundry Gardens. We're also going to be placing a radar feedback sign on Fennel as you enter the town property. And at the south end of town, near the church. So four radar feedback signs, two in new locations, and two that are going to be new enhanced radar feedback signs. So that's just an example of the kind of improvements we do with the traffic calming funding. Streetlight replacement, we're working on the Oak Circle neighborhood. In the last week, we've replaced five streetlights. Those streetlights are rather unique in town. They're all wooden poles. Some of them are rather new, meaning somewhere in the five to 10-year age. Some of them are much older. What we have found with these poles in that neighborhood is that they're rotten in the bottom, in the dirt. You can't really tell until they start leaning over, and it really kind of is problematic. In addition, they're not an LED light, so we're going to get some energy savings. They're going to be nighttime friendly, and they're going to match the rest of town. So we're going to continue to try to complete the Oak Circle neighborhood, and then when we're finished with that, the next neighborhood would be Heritage, and that would complete the town-owned portion of streetlight replacement. At that point, we would begin to talk about PG&E lights, but that's much further down the road.
Do you have a cost on that, Joe?
On which?
The streetlight replacement?
$25,000 for the year.
And how about on the drainage and erosion?
$15,000 annually. If that's not used, again, all of these programs, the portions that aren't used go back to general fund balance. Some of them return a good amount, and some of them we have used almost in their entirety. Traffic calming, something that most of the time goes back to fund balance almost in its entirety. Streetlight replacement is one that we almost always use in its entirety. So just kind of an example of those two programs. Getting into the wastewater and water sides, the enterprise sides of our CIP. This year, we replaced two pumps at the Joint Treatment Plant. These are trickle-through filter pumps. Upcoming 18-19, we're going to replace the other two pumps. So it's four pumps. These pumps are able to work so that you can shut one pump off and work on it or isolate it while the other pump is in service. It's my understanding that these pumps are in excess of 10 years old. So they definitely have done a good service, and they're at their, or surpass their service life. Three-quarter ton pickup. The current pickup is a 2006. We're using JPA, a joint purchasing agreement, and trying to get local vendors to match that price this year. The budget for this is $50,000. We bought a similar truck this year. The budget was $50,000, and we came in at around $42,000. So we're able to...
And Joe, though, can you explain that the truck includes a lot of the equipment and specialized stuff? It's not the same as the $28,000 Chevy or Ford off the...
Right. So this is a three-quarter ton truck. That brings the price up just a little bit, but it also has all the emergency lights, the boxes, the tow hitch, and all of the equipment that we need to be able to do that job and to support the functions of the public works staff, whatever the weather and whatever the time of day. This is the main and lateral repair that I was talking about, so this runs in tandem with our pavement program. I think earlier in our discussion this evening, we talked about trying to delay or somehow put off some of these projects. I think that that's possible. I would caution... I would caution, this particular pipeline was probably put in nineteen-seventy-eight, we think, and so it's really reaching its service life. We haven't had any main breaks on this section. Pipelines, it's only a matter of time before that starts happening. We're putting in a twenty-five-year road. It would be my advice that we do this main and lateral repair, put in a twenty-five-to-fifty year water line system that's going to match what we're going to have in the road, and then not have to worry about digging the road up and decreasing both the service life of the road and eventually trying to replace the pipeline several years down the road when it's much more expensive.
So I have a question. You said twenty-five to fifty years. Is that really...
It's actually a fifty-year service life is what we design the water line and sewer line systems.
But things really don't last that long.
This, they do last that long.
Okay.
The one in Washington Park is an exception. If you just recently, there was an article, Napa Sand is replacing some of their sewer lines. They try to replace two percent a year. That's because they last fifty years, and by the time they finish, they're, you know, a hundred percent of their system is replaced, and then they kind of start again. So we're in a similar fashion. In some cases, we may get more than fifty years, but we design it for a fifty-year life expectancy. The roads are designed for twenty-five. Because of the traffic loading that we have and the pavement management that you all have been supporting for many years, we get in excess of twenty-five, probably closer to thirty to thirty-five years out of a road. So as you heard at the PCI discussion that we had with our consultant, it's all about the right treatment at the right time. And when you hit it and kind of bump up that road, then you're kind of increasing that life expectancy and giving that curve a bit slower slope. So that's what we're aiming to do, design roadways that are going to last thirty-five years with a water and sewer system that is going to equal that, so we're not trying to dig them up and kind of make that curve go steeper when it doesn't have to. It's just a smart way to invest. Washington Park Main and Lateral Assessment. So again, we've talked about a little bit of this. There are several things that are contributing, what we think are contributing to the very, very early service life curve in this neighborhood. Number one is we're not quite sure what kind of materials were used. We think that they use some ductile iron pipe or some other kind of a steel pipe. The soil could be very acidic, so that's causing some early wear. It's also our feeling that they were backfilled with the volcanic soil, so if you think about sand or something in your shoe and how when you walk, it kind of rubs a blister or a hole in your heel, the expansion and contraction of soil does the same thing on a pipe. So what we're proposing to do with this, it's a fifty-thousand-dollar project, is go out and do some assessment and then come up with a plan to do whatever repair is recommended, and at that time, we'll come back to this body and have a different plan for the repair or any modifications that we may need to make in Washington Park to make sure that we have a water system that's reliable and, more importantly, is going to match the service life of the roadway.
I have a question. We discussed this at the last Water Roundtable as well. So we have fifty thousand a year in this, and I apologize...
I apologize. We put fifty thousand to do the initial assessment, and then that fifty thousand is a placeholder just to let you all know that there's going to be additional funds that are going to be required for the repair. We're just not sure what that is, much in the same way that we put a hundred-thousand-dollar placeholder for some of our sewer water main and lateral replacement. It's more of a placeholder than an actual amount.
So you have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I'm on the summary page. I'm not on the priority page.
Right.
I would assume this is a priority one?
We have to do the assessment and see what they recommend. There may be some parts of this that are priority one, and there may be other parts of it that we can kind of fit into our CIP and kind of offset some of that cost. I just don't know right now. I can't answer that question.
Understood. My final question is, I understood we're still dealing with the developer on this whole issue?
No.
So some of this...
No.
Very good.
Different deal.
Very good. Go on.
May I just ask a question?
Yes. We'll try to get to the end of the report.
Yeah, sorry. So the assessment will cost fifty thousand, and the other four years, that's just a placeholder to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to wrap up, utilities program, so inflow and infiltration, that's an annual program, and mainly that concerns, that work is mainly involved with our manholes and other areas where we know we're getting inflow and infiltration. As we mentioned earlier, the real challenge with inflow and infiltration is we're basically getting fresh water into our sewer system, and we're treating clean water like it's not clean water, and that cost is passed on to the rate pair. To the extent that we can reduce inflow and infiltration, we can reduce costs to the rate pair. And also, our permit, and if you've noticed, other communities have been getting, there's lawsuits going around that are charging communities with problems with inflow and infiltration with polluting both the ground and the groundwater. So we're trying to avoid all that, and the way to do that is have an inflow and infiltration program that you put money into regularly and work on all of those things to help give yourself a little bit of risk reduction. Sewer main replacement program, next year, we're going to continue working on A-line. A-line runs parallel to Beard Ditch. For those of you who are familiar with the area that runs along Beard Ditch, lots of trees, especially Vineyard Park through the homes that run along, parallel to Beard Ditch, those trees have a way of finding themselves, the root systems into the sewer system, causing problems with the pipe, causing problems with the flow. So we will do an in-situ replacement. We have a product that lasts in excess of fifty years. It's called Fold-in Form, so basically, they heat up a piece of pipeliner, they drag it into the pipeline, they expand it, and then it hardens up, and you have basically a pipe that is now brand-new without doing any of the old-style dig, lay, and backfill. So it's a very affordable, efficient, and effective way to rehab a pipeline, especially something like A-line that, in some places, is relatively inaccessible. Plant and Equipment Replacement Program, this is an annual program as well. So this year, we had a grit screw that failed prematurely. These kinds of programs, we try to plan for the expenditures. Sometimes, we're not able to do that, and they fail prematurely. That's what this program is for, both the planned and unplanned expenditures. The Town Pump Station Equipment Replacement Program is eleven thousand dollars on an annual basis, goes up about five percent annually. Again, this is just to put money away in the event that we're going to need it to replace anything at the town pump station. Water meter replacement program, we're in the last year. We might have one more year of water meter replacement, and then we'll be putting money away into the replacement program. I heard some comments earlier about water meter replacement. I think what most people are maybe not aware, when water meters age, they tend to underread. When they're underreading, that means we're all paying for water from the vet's home, but the person who's getting, has an older meter that's underreading, isn't really paying what they're using because the meter's underreading. So that is the real challenge with an older meter, and that's why we do a meter replacement program, so we can keep everything accurate and make sure that the water that's being used is accurately billed and the people who are using it are paying for it. Main and Service Lateral Replacement, that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so that's the fund that we'll draw down from to do projects like Yount Street for the main and lateral replacement. That's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars annually. Now we have stuff that's new to the five-year CIP, so based on this year's positive feedback that we had on the arch structure that was at Community Hall, Community Center, in the quad area, there's been quite a few questions about having something on a more permanent basis for a shade structure. We put this into year three, and it's tentatively plugged in at a hundred thousand dollars. Of course, it's going to continue more discussion, but there's definitely been a lot of positive feedback on having some of a more permanent shade structure in that area to allow some more of a all-weather use of that facility. Emergency Warning System, again, this is another one that is mainly driven by some resident questions, but also a discussion that the town manager and I, along with some council members, have been having. Now, we also have been getting some feedback from both Cal Fire and from OES, that they're looking at a county-wide type of an installation, that they would give us some feedback on what they think might be the best location, that kind of advice. It's in the very early stages right now. We have a pretty good price on it, based on some discussions from a supplier, thirty-five thousand dollars. That would be for FY twenty-twenty-one.
Excuse me, is there a reason we're putting that off for two years? Is it because we're trying to coordinate with the county, or...
Right.
I mean, that seems like, in the scheme of our budget, a minimal amount of money for something that might become very important for our community.
If I could, Councilmember Dorman, there's a couple of things. One, there is ongoing discussion and trying to have some degree of coordination. There's also the possibility, and I say this, you know, oftentimes FEMA has mitigation money that comes up from a grant standpoint after an emergency, so if we had a regional plan, we may be able to be eligible for that. So that's the primary reason, it's the number two. But I will also remind you that the council has the prerogative to move a project up earlier than its schedule based on your all's interest and/or identification of funding. So what we're really doing right now, as Public Works Director alluded, is he's introducing those projects that are brand-new, never been in the five-year CIP.
Unless we've been directed by council, it's our practice not to deliver something to year one that you all haven't seen or approved or discussed. So as the town manager rightly noted, it's a discussion that you all can have and give some direction. Mostly Homeland Security would probably have something that would help defray some of this cost, not a given, but we also want to continue to have the discussion with Public Safety to make sure that we're doing something that is going to work for the community, because if you just have a horn, it doesn't give, you know, maybe the kind of direction, where are you going, east, west, north, south? Are you going to Silroddo Trail, or are you going Highway twenty-nine? We want to make sure that we're getting a device in front of you that can actually give people information so that they can make a decision on what's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, that's the most important thing right now. There is no county policy on this. So as Joe stated correctly, you have a horn, is that a fire? Is that an earthquake? Is that a whatever? And what are you supposed to do about it? Most people are familiar with volunteer fire department siren going off in Santa Helena, for example, but no, and visitors don't know what the horn means. And so there needs to be a lot of education and coordination before we worry about buying a horn, frankly. So if it's a couple of years down the road...
There's also, what I would say, as part of that evaluation, Mayor, there are some also that are more portable, so that they can be used in a geographic area rather than permanently mounted. I grew up in the Midwest where tornado sirens, and I will caution that, to your point, knowing what the warning siren is, because there's a certain pattern for watch, a certain pattern for tornado warning, and most people, if you wake up in the middle of the night and don't know where you're at in the pattern, you don't know which one is which. So, you know, it's not a panacea, but more importantly, there's regional conversation, and before we go on our own, we think it's more important to be part of the regional conversation.
I would also say that some of the streetlight enhancements that the town manager and I have been looking at over the past two years, mainly for a Wi-Fi feature, also included some very sophisticated warning devices. So that whole end of the technology spectrum is kind of growing in ways that we can't foresee right now, but just the very small amount of growth that we've seen in those products are also something that could be useful for an emergency warning system and relatively affordable.
And on this topic, I know that some of the council and some of the community members have expressed interest, so...
Replacement riding mower, so our mower is past ten years old now. They usually, typically, they're seven-to-ten-year replacement cycle. We don't mow every day, so our mower, and we have mostly the same operator on the mower every time, so those two things contribute to a mower that has a bit longer service life, but by twenty-one, twenty-two, we're going to need a new mower. So that's why this is in the program this year. And then utility projects. So as you see, most of these are stacked into the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-three range of the CIP. The backup sludge heater, two-hundred thousand dollars. So right now, we have a primary sludge heater. Should that thing go down or need work, we would be challenged to provide that necessary treatment for our sludge. As a side benefit, this would be probably a little bit smaller unit. It would be a little bit more energy-efficient, so there would be some slight return on investment in those two areas. Clean and inspect the primary and secondary digester. This hasn't been done for fifteen years. BMP says every ten years. We're into the range where we need to look at this, and that's why it's in this project.
Joe, in the interest of time, how much more do we have to go through here?
This is the last slide, Mayor.
Because we are several years down the road here.
Yeah, so Epoxy Scumwell, we're going to pipe burst the town forest man. We talked about that, and we also talked about the trickling media filter in the earlier presentation. Now I have questions, if you have any.
Any questions for the council? Any member of the audience want to comment or have a question? Okay, so you're looking for direction from us on accepting...
Any direction you would have on any of the projects or any other new projects that you might want to see in the May twenty-second budget workshop.
Yes, Councilmember Dorman.
Where does the, I'm sorry, I might be out of place. Where's the townwide internet that we set a budget line for last year?
So the town manager and I have been continuing discussion with a vendor who is showing some growth in their ability to deliver the product. We thought it was a little bit further along early. They just cut a deal with City of Santa Clara, so it's a commercially viable product. We were trying to figure out the revenue stream and some other features so that we could maybe make that some type of a revenue type of a product. We're working on it, and we think they're getting closer. They're supposed to get back to us in the next couple of weeks again.
In short, it continues to go, the Public Works Director is mentioning revenue. The system installation is fairly straightforward. It's the ongoing operating cost, so the reason you need a revenue stream is to pay for the internet bill, because the internet bill's not free.
About thirty-six thousand a year for the internet to run.
So we continue to look at that, and there's also changing in technology, so it's, we haven't found an appropriate solution to bring back. There's another challenge we're learning is our linear nature of the street in terms of location and placement. So we're not giving up on it, it's just something that has not, we haven't found something in the budget.
So is that twenty-twenty-four then, or is it twenty-eighteen?
We don't know, but what we do know is it's not going to, we don't think it's going to be a big CIP project, because the vendor is going to supply the materials, a small upfront cost to the town, and then trying to figure out how they're going to, their model for revenue so that we can help offset some of the costs for the Wi-Fi. We can bring that back on May twenty-second, and we'll put it back into the queue.
We can definitely put it back in on that, but I don't know that we'll have a better...
We can have a placeholder.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I already asked the public, so do you look for a formal adoption of the, or just general direction?
No, just a little general direction.
You have general direction.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item, Proposition sixty-eight, Support Letter. This is our protocol that we have the discussion for the entire council. Similar item next, Proposition sixty-nine. So Steve, did you want to touch on this very quickly?
Just briefly, in accordance with the town council protocols, the council needs to provide direction. This is a resolution in support of the proposition, which is to support protecting the SB one allocation for our streets and roads, so it's very consistent.
So it's very consistent with the efforts that the council's been working on with the League of California Cities.
Any questions, Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Is Yountville guaranteed any dollars out of this?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure guaranteed, but certainly potential.
Well, we have the potential.
What I would say is, under SB1, there is an allocation process and a formula, so, you know, we'll get something. If it goes away, we will not get what we would have been earmarked for.
Well, we're on Prop 68, right?
Yes.
The parks and the drought.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Park improvements, yeah.
We're eligible for, what I would say, that one's not necessarily on a per capita.
No, actually, we reviewed this extensively in environmental quality, and even, there will be some per capita, but even the smallest towns are guaranteed $300,000, unless they change the language.
Well, we'll wait and see on the final, because that would be something...
That's why we're writing potentially a letter of support, because we'd be getting $300,000.
And we have been successful to the point, the Public Works Director mentioned the $500,000 grant to continue the Hopper Creek path system. So we have been successful in some prior parks and water bond.
And then I have just a general question. This will also apply to Prop 69. Is there a way to support this without becoming a member of the coalition? Because I don't, what is the coalition? I mean, I've researched it, I've read it, but can we just send a letter of support, or do we have to join the coalition?
That's your call.
Yeah.
Is there a downside? I mean, I don't understand the coalition, and I don't, you know, I will abstain if I have to, but I don't understand it, and I don't really want the town to be a member of something I don't understand, so maybe somebody can help me.
I think it's basically a symbolic coalition.
The coalition is a group of people that are supporting the initiative. Some of them are funders, some of them are cities, the League of California Cities, other folks that are supporting water and the parks bond. So it's people that have a collective interest and believe that that's in the respective best interests of their constituents.
And I think the league is looking at having a fuller body that they can present as supporting this proposition as they are marketing it and lobbying in favor of it. So they list all the members of this coalition that has potentially a little more weight than individual letters.
And so if we join it, is there any cost to us, or do we have to do anything? Do we have to do any...
There's no additional cost.
It's just a one-shot...
We're running on a list of many other cities and towns that would be supportive.
Thank you.
And that'll also be the same in the next item.
That's what I figured. Thanks.
Any other questions? Members of the public have any thoughts? Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution in support of Prop 68?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 18-3456, supporting Proposition 68. California drought water parks, climate coastal protection, and outdoor access for all act, for all Act of 2018.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get our screen up here in a moment. Okay, please vote. I'm going to make a second motion. I'm joking, sorry. A substitute, thank you. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto Prop 69, very similar.
And I actually gave you the staff report in between the two, so I apologize. The biggest difference on 69 is it's an attempt to constitutionally protect and guarantee the percentage of revenue earmarked on SB1, and it also is an effort to directly oppose the SB1 repeal.
And I appreciate we got this proposed resolution from the League of California Cities, but I cannot vote in favor of a resolution from our town that says the proposed November proposition would raid over $300,000 annually. I think if you want to say could possibly divert, or, the word raid to me is really pejorative. This is just a resolution.
That's just a term that they often use because it's impactful, it's not...
And again, that's the council's choice. If you want to change the word, you can change the word.
No, I'm okay. I'm just stating why I would vote against it if it includes word raid.
The league has regularly used that term when it's an attempt to take away funding that has been approved. They like that term.
California speak.
So if any member of the public, I'm betting no, okay? If there's a motion to be had on this, if there's a desire to change the word raid to something more palatable, then offer up an option. Jeopardize?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, changing the word raid and the G, whereas to could possibly, instead of would raid, could possibly jeopardize. And I think it's used somewhere else in there. So wherever it's raid, could possibly jeopardize, and that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Very good. Tonight's letter of support night. We have one now related to Upper Valley Disposal Services considering a letter of support. We'll start with our own staff just to introduce you real quick, and then don't go anywhere. You're close enough. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Briefly, we have a request for a letter of support from Upper Valley Disposal for its request for a minor modification to its use permit from the County of Napa to enclose an existing composting blending area and to construct a compressed natural gas, CNG, refueling station at its existing facility, and to increase the amount of food material composting at the site. As many of you know, we are a member of the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, which is the franchise holder, if you will, or not, that regulates the franchise for Clover Flats and our disposal system. So this is consistent with some of the policies and directions of Upper Valley Waste. Councilmember Mueller will be able to explain more on that. And with that, we do have Bryce and Christie have been patiently waiting through the evening to talk to you a little bit more about what they're doing and to request a letter.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bryce Howard. I work for Upper Valley Disposal Services for your collection, recycling, and composter for your town. Pretty quickly, it's spelled out really clearly in the staff report. We're looking for a minor modification for our conditional use permit from the county. We're in the unincorporated area of the county. The modification is just asking for three small parts, and it's all really centered around reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, which are pretty much being regulated now by the state of California. So really, the first part is a blending barn, 15,000 square feet. It's to take in food waste and blend it, mix it with green waste, and then turn it into compost, basically. And we're going to need that because we're going to start a residential co-collected composting program, probably start with your town, it's sort of on the smaller size compared to the other two towns. And we'll probably start a program in 2018 if we're successful in this use permit, which will allow your residents to take food waste out of the brown can or out of the trash and put it into the green can, therefore taking it out of the landfill, therefore reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. So it's a blending barn to do that processing. The second piece is, because we're going to be taking a little more food waste in from residential, we already do a fairly robust program with commercial food waste. We're going to ask for an increase in the amount of food waste we take into our White Hall Lane facility from about 2,000 tons up to about 4,000 or 4,500 tons. The overall tons of the facility doesn't change. We're sort of substituting out some of those tons for some of the pumice tons we currently are permitted to do. Plus, the traffic will not increase, and there's no real impact. It's CEQA-exempt, categorically exempt. The last piece we're asking for is a little different than the other two. It's a CNG fueling station. It's really just a gas, where you have a fuel line that goes in, a natural gas fuel line, basically an above-ground tank and about 10 or 15 hose bibs that actually fill the trucks. Currently, our trucks are all diesel-powered, and we'd like to in the future take advantage of CNG being a little less expensive, but about 15% less on greenhouse gas emissions and a little quieter. So that's really what the letter of support is for, is for those three pieces.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant on this, Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. Do we have any idea of the expected costs of these improvements to the ratepayers?
Yeah, she's saying I left that part out, is what she's saying. So we don't expect any cost to the ratepayers. We have a grant pending of about $1.2 million to pay for the blending barn, and we believe we're going to get that grant from the state of California. We have really good, strong indications we're going to get that, so that'll pay for that. The actual fuel cost, because of the fuel savings, we think that would pay for any infrastructure costs for CNG natural gas.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Before I ask Councilmember Mueller, since she's on that board, any other members of the public? Christie, you're just sitting here all night, you're not going to speak?
Yeah. No, I mean, we've been working on this for quite some time. It's kind of come to the forefront, and then it's taken a backseat, and it's come back to the forefront. So we had, we came before our JPA a couple of years ago with a giant master plan that became a little bit overwhelming, and so we took a backseat to everything, and we sort of tackled it in small elements. And so there is a state-mandated bill that is in, still in draft form from CARB. It's called MAB 1383, and it says all of us have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so it takes into account where the sectors that this greenhouse gas emission's coming from, and it's coming from organics. It's also coming from cows, and there's not much we're doing about cows, unless we stop eating beef, I guess. But landfills is where the organics is ending up. So this is a pretty aggressive bill that says by 2020, we're going to start removing all organics from landfills. And so permitting our White Hall Lane facility for the addition of these organics is one thing that we're doing, but we're also permitting Clover Flat at the same time for composting at the landfill so that we'll have enough capacity in both locations to compost organic. So it's just kind of the new future. And then, of course, there's a whole nother market concept to this. We can make it, but we have to be able to put it back in our farms and gardens and vineyards and food supplies. So that's the other component of this. But right now, we're a little bit behind the scene. We're behind, we're, you know, maybe two years behind. We've really been at the forefront of the composting movement. We started composting in 1966 with Robert Mandavi Winery, the first year they crushed their grapes. We started hauling their grape pumice, and we've been composting that ever since. In the 90s, we added green waste, and now here we are with the, sort of the next generation of composting. So we'd really appreciate a letter of support. I did receive one, not that I want to muscle you into it, but I did receive one from the other two Up Valley Cities, so we really appreciate your support.
Thank you. I believe we have another member of the audience who would like to comment, so just come on up, if you would please, to the microphone. Thank you. You've been patiently waiting as well, so we want you to have your chance.
No, just a question, just how large is the gas tank and where is it going to be located?
We will ask.
And that's just based on our last experience in town with a tank.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. So sometimes when we say a fueling station, it sounds really scary, but the fueling station is not actually public. It's on our private property. A line would come down from the highway into our facility. So currently, we park our 15, our trucks, our 15 fleet of trucks in a certain area. They'll be still parked in that area. The tank will be co-located near where the trucks are, which is kind of adjacent to our composting operation and really in the center of the facility. So if you went on Google Maps right at this moment, you could pull it up, you could see where our trucks park. The trucks will park in the same place. They'll actually be pointed in the opposite direction that they're in right now. And there's no additional sound. We'll still use diesel because we have other equipment that's run by diesel, and I think that answers...
He actually also asked the capacity, the size of the tank.
Oh, the size of the tank. 10,000? 10,000? Okay, 10,000 gallons?
10,000.
Yeah. It says slow fill. You can also get an additional, smaller tank for a fast fill, so slow fill means they fill overnight. And then if you have an emergency where a truck runs out, you can get a fast-fill tank that is, you know, in 15 minutes, the truck could be filled. But really, the majority of the trucks will fill overnight.
Can I add something? I think the real question they might be asking, because most people don't know, that we have a natural gas line that runs the full length of the valley, it runs right along Highway 29. So that natural gas line is what they'll be tapping into with another line that then runs to their facility. So...
Where? Where is it? I don't know where it is.
They don't know where their facility is.
Oh, their facility is right behind Weatherford Grove Winery.
Okay. The facility address is actually 1673 Highway 29, and it is also located off of White Hall Lane. So our trucks no longer access White Hall Lane unless they're picking up garbage and recycling. The trucks all access into the property at 1673 Highway 29, which is adjacent to Galleron Lane.
Several miles up Up Valley.
On the west side.
Any other members of the public have questions or comments? Councilmember Mueller, do you have anything else to add?
No, we've been, I've been bringing this up for the last two years at our JPA board meeting. I'm anxious for this to get approved by the county, so I really think these letters of support hopefully will push in that direction because it's coming and we have to prepare for, I think it's, you know, all the organics that we have to take out of the landfill, so I hope we all support it.
Any other questions? And I'm assuming that we have modified this letter so that it's not an "I," it's a "we."
That's correct, and/or I would change it to the "t."
Right. Okay. Is there a motion to support this letter of support?
Still moved.
There we go. I'll take the motion if you push the button, and then, Councilmember Mueller, did you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Too late? Yes?
No.
I can stop.
Councilmember Mueller seconded that, so if we're going to see a, okay. So the record will show motion, Dorman, second, Mueller. That passes unanimously, so. Successful wait for the evening to finally get to this.
Thank you. Glad you liked it.
Thank you. Staff informational reports, do we have any that haven't already been given?
We have some.
Flood control, nothing, I think, critical. MBTA, I'll just very quickly, Councilmember Dorman and I, among about 10 others from the MBTA board, toured two autonomous vehicle locations in the East Bay. If you want to quickly just recount the...
It was very exciting. We saw the newest technology, and then we saw some actually operating at Bishop's Ranch as an autonomous shuttle. There is a human still to stop it, to start it after it stops when it sees an obstacle. But we are also, the mayor and I are representatives to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, so we are working to see if anywhere in Napa Valley, and perhaps even Yountville, could be a test site that they would like.
Yeah, I know. Councilmember Dorman?
What? Who said that?
The shuttle at Bishop Ranch seems much more confined in its capacity. The technology that was on display at the Concord Naval Station and the Gomentum team is very exciting to see actual, real manufactured vehicles with a series of technologies combining together to make this autonomous vehicle thing something very real. They're looking at projection of 2025, I think they said, that they'd like to see vehicles being added to various fleets. So other meeting reports that we need, given the hour brief, hopefully? Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, the Upper Valley Waste Management, we met last Monday, and just an update on Yes, the Upper Valley Waste Management, we met last Monday, and just an update on the fire debris that we're accepting. We had originally approved 120,000 tons, but that, we have surpassed that. And so now we are approving an additional 40,000 tons and through March 19th, and we'll see, I expect we're going to get all of that. And the consequence is, there's positives and negatives. It's potentially going to limit the lifespan of our landfill by about three and a half years. And, but the good side is that we're actually collecting money for all that tonnage. So we've got potentially another, let's see, 120,000 tons gave us 570,000, and an additional 40 tons will give us 190,000, so we can pay for some of our capital projects. Also, there is a hazardous waste event, a collection event coming up for businesses on April 27th, and residents at April 28th at the Upper Valley Compost Recycling Yard, which we just talked about. It's on the west side of Highway 29 behind Rutherford Grove Winery. There also a, we are ready for our seventh annual shredded day at West America Bank, so mark your calendars, April 20th from 2:00 to 4:00. And I attended Environmental Quality Policy Committee, and we are work plan, one of the major things that we've been dealing with, with the Upper Valley Waste Management, is we are having a lot of problems getting rid of our recycling. So, and that's happening all throughout the state, primarily because China is not buying it anymore. And oil is cheap, so it's easier just to make plastic. So I was successful to get that issue on our EQ policy work plan. We're going to be discussing, it's one of our top three items, recycling and out-of-state markets, stormwater and water quality. Again, thank you to our town manager one more time to get us out of having to charge our residents these high fees on their property taxes. They, we are very fortunate. And CCAs, which are, we all know, is renewable energy plans that we have with MCE. So those are my updates. And I'll be attending CALAFCA board meeting this Thursday and Friday in San Diego.
Any other reports? I just want to recognize the successful Yanville International Short Film Festival that was held here in town a couple of weekends ago, and also that Yanville Live is coming up, March 15th through the 18th. If folks are not already buying tickets, they should.
Mayor, if you would, if you're not able to, do you have...
Do you have your, right, I think he's inviting you to bring up the...
I'm urging two council members to announce an upcoming...
The cannabis workshop.
Cannabis workshop will be Monday, February 26th, beginning at 6:00 PM in the Heritage Room of the Community Center. I think we've put together a pretty good panel. The speakers will speak three to five minutes each, and then we expect to reserve the bulk of the time for a community discussion and involvement.
Yes. Thank you.
So can we all go to that one? Is this officially announced special meeting? Okay.
Very good. I believe that's all of our business for this evening, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to our next meeting of Tuesday, March 6th at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Thank you. Somebody, I'll second it. We're all in favor. Good night, everyone.
Good night.